Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Krusen, nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Glenn Nielsen from Concordia Seminary. He also has with him Noah the Comfort Dog, and I think he'll talk to us a little bit about Noah. If you haven't had an opportunity to pet Noah or to snap a photo with him, he is a great dog, so take an opportunity before they leave.
Well, thank you very much. Noah Comfort Dog is a ministry of Timothy Lutheran Church. Thank Joe Vaccaro for having us here as his guests this morning. Noah goes to a variety of places, such as nursing homes, St. Mary's Hospital, kids' classrooms, funeral visitations, and earlier this month, he was in Nashville, Illinois, along with eleven other dogs, for the funeral for this family that was killed in the plane crash. And so, he has traveled a great deal. He's from Chicago, but is now living here in St. Louis, and he's the first comfort dog in the St. Louis area. So, we're very pleased to be here this morning, representing both Timothy Lutheran Church, and also, he serves at Concordia Seminary in Clayton. So, we'll give you a chance to meet Noah, but we are to begin with prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank and praise you, this day, the day that you give us air to breathe, ground to stand on, city to live in, people who care for us. We thank you for the many gifts that you give to us. You've spoken to us in your word about how we are to show respect for governing authorities and honor as well, so we ask this day that those who govern us will receive the proper respect and honor that is accorded to them, as you have called them, called them to serve in matters of what is best and the benefit of this city. We thank you also that you are with them. We ask that you guide them, give them wisdom and direction, so that what they do is for the good of the people they represent and for this city that we live in. We pray this all in your holy name, for you have given us every good thing in your Son, our Savior. Amen.
The carol came up and said hi to Noah, and Noah rolled over on his back and had his paws up, and it was quite a sight to see between the two of them. Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guests? Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guests today Maureen McDonald from the Association of Realtors, and also, Joe Stegler and Ryan Lynch from the Police Officers Association.
Alderman from the thirteenth.
Members of the board, I would like to have as my honored guests these following people from the Carpenters District Council of Bridge, St. Louis, Todd Hake, Jeff Hans, Keith Taylor, and Mark Dalton.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guest Gary Otten from Painters District Council Two, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-Three, that has their office in the beautiful Bevo.
Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest my father Rodney Hubbard, who's also the committee man of the fifth ward, and my constituent Gary Parker, who's been a lifelong resident of the fifth ward and a part of the Cornscrews City Management Corporation.
All the ones from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Mike Grady from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local Five-Sixty-Two, and David Holmes from St. Louis City Labor Club.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, past comptroller, Vervis Jones, and twenty-seventh ward, alderperson, former. Thanks.
All the ones from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have several guests this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, Mr. John Cross with Cross and Associates, and Mavis Thompson, the license collector.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Ms. Mavis Thompson, John Cross, Darrell Piggy, Leroy Grant, and Mr. Otis Williams. And my very special guest today is Mr. Tom Shepherd.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today Mr. Anthony Lancia with the AGC.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Mr. Leonard Johnson, Deputy Director for the Treasurer's Office, and also, an extremely devoted mentor to the young people, and most especially, working with them on Harris Stow campus. Thank you.
All the ones from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest Ms. Charles Attar Taylor, who is in the eminent domain process. I want people to see the face of eminent domain, as I stand up here to oppose it, so that people will know that there are people who are occupying houses, and when we make these decisions about eminent domain, that we are personally affecting people, and we are holding people responsible for things that the government didn't do right.
All right, thank you. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we were gathered here on February sixth, in addition to this being National Wear Red Day to bring attention to the hardy and healthcare of hearts for women, this is also National Go-to-Work Naked Day, which I am glad no one took part in today. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth, our approval of the minutes. Madam Clerk, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes of the January twenty-third meeting.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries, report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from his honor the mayor, the following correspondence, dear members of the board. I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disability Resource Commission. The appointment of Michael Garthman, a resident of the thirteenth ward, whose term will expire on October the first, two thousand and nineteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Commission.
Move by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Airport Art Advisory Committee. The appointment of Kaiku Obata, a resident of St. Louis County, whose term will expire on December the tenth, two thousand and seventeen. The appointment of Roseanne Weiss, a resident of the seventeenth ward, and whose term will expire on December the tenth, two thousand and nineteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Airport Art Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kiku Obata and Roseanne Weiss to the Airport Art Advisory Committee.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
With dispensal line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize?
Yes, I wanted to remove bill two forty-four off of the informal calendar.
Okay, please proceed, Alderman.
And perfected, I'm sorry.
Would you like to move for perfection of board bill number two forty-four?
Yes, sir.
Do.
So, move.
All right.
Yeah.
It's been moved to perfect board bill two forty-four, entertain the second, motion is second by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion, Alderman?
No discussion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection informal.
With dispensal line items nine and ten, first reading board bills.
Board bill two seven-two, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, in order to establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on McCausland at Marquette and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
Board bill two seven-two to the Streets Committee. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, board bill two six-eight, sponsored by Alderman Krusen, in order to adopting and approving the petition to amend the petition to establish the Central West End Community Improvement District to add property to the Central West End Business Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee, board bill two thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and President Reed, in order to repealing the requirement of approval of the City Plan Commission of all applications for proposed residential structures or uses that are to be governmentally subsidized, repealing section one of ordinance five-six-one-six-seven and containing an emergency clause. Board bill two four-two, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to recommend it by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from B to family dwelling and H-area commercial to the H-area commercial district only in city block forty-four, in city block one-four-four-five, for property at twenty-seven-hundred South Grand and containing an emergency clause. Board bill two sixty, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, President Reed, and Alderman Davis, in order to amending the definitions under the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency, repealing section two of ordinance six-seven-one-one-nine, enacting a new section in lieu thereof to include the definition, source of income, and containing an emergency clause. Board bill two six-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in order to affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment area, and a redevelopment project authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and ROL Capital, designating ROL Capital as the developer of the development area and containing a severability clause. Board bill two seventy, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in order to designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as Union Station Phase Two Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act and establishing the Union Station Phase Two Special Allocation Fund containing a severability clause. Board bill two seven-one, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in order to recommend it by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed eighteen million, five hundred thousand dollars plus issuance cost, principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for Union Station Phase Two Redevelopment Projects and containing a severability clause. The following board bills was reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board bill two thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis, in order to recommend it by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the director of airports, and the comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and a contract of sale between St. Louis and North Park Partners for the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Public Employees Committee. Board bill two thirty-eight, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, in order to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, including compensation plans, terms and conditions of employment, leave, benefits, leave of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinances six-nine-one-eight-nine and six-nine-six-one-seven, allocating certain other employees to agree with race and including an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board bill two fifty, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the twenty-three-fifty South Grand Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause. Board bill two six-four, sponsored by Alderman Krusen, in order to authorizing the city to execute a cooperation agreement to amend in part the agreement incorporated into ordinance six-nine-seven-three-two, and allowing for the city, the Great Rivers Greenway District, and the City Arch River, two thousand and fifteen foundation, to provide procedures for their cooperation in the design, completion, and ongoing operation, care, and maintenance of city blocks one-fourteen and one-thirty-one, containing a severability clause, a governance clause, and an emergency clause. Board bill two ten, sponsored by Alderman Green, in order to amending ordinance six-nine-seven-five-eight by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the thirty-six-thirty-seven North Utah Place, Utah Place Redevelopment Area. Board bill two eleven, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in order to approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-three-twenty-nine through fifty-one markets and containing a severability clause. Board bill two forty, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to moving a redevelopment plan for forty-one-thirty-five through thirty-seven Shaw. Board bill two forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, in order to approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for eight-fifty-one through eight-fifty-nine Goodfellow and containing a severability clause. Board bill one-eight-nine, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and President Reed, in order to recommend it by the Civil Service Commission pertaining to applicants seeking employment with the city in positions under the classified service plan, providing that service in the U.S. are enforced as meritorious, adding new provisions that establish a military veteran hiring preference system containing definition, scoring system, and documentation requirements. Board bill two twelve, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-fifty-six Russell containing a severability clause. Board bill two thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in order to moving a redevelopment plan for twenty-one-twelve Sydney. Board bill two twenty-three, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in order to moving a redevelopment plan for twenty-six-thirteen through seventeen Marcus. Board bill two twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-three-eighteen Wisconsin and containing a severability clause. Board bill two thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nineteen-fifty-six Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board bill two thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five-twenty-eight Botanical and containing a severability clause. Board bill two thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-four-thirty-five Elizabeth and containing a severability clause. Board bill two thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-three-fifty South Grand Boulevard and containing a severability clause. Board bill two forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-four-thirteen South Tenth Street and containing a severability clause. Board bill two fifty-three, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-two-nineteen Regal Place and containing a severability clause. Board bill two five-four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine-twenty-three Cleveland Avenue and containing a severability clause. Board bill two five-five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-sixth party Arsenal Street and containing a severability clause. Board bill two five-seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-four-forty-eight Oakland and containing a severability clause. Board bill two five-eight, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nineteen-seventeen Rutgers Street and containing a severability clause. Board bill two six-one, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five-nineteen Botanical and containing a severability clause. Board bill two six-two, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in order to moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five-thirty-two Magnolia and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's move board bill one-eighty-nine, committee substitute, to the perfection calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Move board bill one-eighty-nine, committee substitute, to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the sixth, that we perfect the aforementioned bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Board bill two five-nine, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, in order to recommend it by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the amended and restated redevelopment agreement by and between the city and Northside Regeneration and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the fifth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two five-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of board bill two fifty-nine, which is basically a special.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifth, entertain the second, second by Alderman from the third. Alderman from the fifth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, what board bill two fifty-nine, the special allocation fund, does is that it enables SLDC to hire someone to monitor the process, and the TIF accumulates these dollars, and it assists the developer to access and pay for project management services. Okay, let me, hold on, let me, I'm giving this stuff right. Okay. So, basically, that's what it does. It's revenue neutral, and two fifty-nine just amends the TIF, and it gives them the ability to identify and coordinate utility relocation and vacation of streets and alleys.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been a request for roll call. Alderman from the fifth, you recognize the close. Alderman from the fifth, you recognize the close.
I would like to renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded, that we perfect board bill number two fifty-nine. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed.
Nope.
Eighteen, I vote seven, no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the fifth, and perfected board bill number two five-nine.
Board bill two-six-three, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and Alderman Bosley, in order to approving a redevelopment plan for the cat Jefferson Parnell Montgomery Street, North Twenty-Second Street Redevelopment Area.
Alderman from the fifth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two sixty-three, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for perfection of board bill two sixty-three.
Move by Alderman.
Committee substitute.
Move by.
As amended. There's a lot going on.
Move by Alderman from the fifth, second by Alderman from the third. Alderman from the fifth, please proceed.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for adoption of floor substitute number one.
Is it on everyone's desk?
Yes, it is.
I don't have it here. I know I don't have it.
I was told it was on everyone's desk.
Yeah. 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 I don't, I do not have a floor substitute.
Okay, we'll get it to you. I was told it was put on everyone's desk. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on point of order.
Oh, point of order is just.
I'm sorry, it's a floor amendment. Maybe that's the.
Excuse me.
My point of order was just that I don't have the floor sub on my desk.
Okay, yeah, me.
It's an amendment.
Okay, it's an amendment, okay. Okay. All right, Alderman from the fifth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, what this amendment does, if you.
You want to move, you want to bring the amendment in front of us first, you want to move to?
Yes, I would like to move to bring board bill two sixty-three.
Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, to board bill, two sixty-three committee substitute, as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifth, second by Alderman from the third. Alderman, please proceed.
Okay, if you refer to the amendment, beginning on page five, line nine, after the words, "under the condition that," basically, what this amendment will do is delete, "no parcel may be acquired by the exercise of eminent domain," and it will then insert, "L-CRA shall not file eminent domain proceedings in the circuit court as to any parcel." Basically, what this is, is a legal fix, and it's done to tighten up our language. There's a slight variation in wording, and it's believed to better clarify the legally defined and understood eminent domain process, for which L-CRA will require prior authorization from the Board of Aldermen in order to initiate. The current language uses an undefined term acquired, which can be argued to have different meanings in this context due to the lack of legal definition, making it unclear as to what point during the process L-CRA must seek committee and board approval. The adjusted language aims to strengthen the current language intent to protect the due process of property owners and protect NGA's confidence in the integrity of our process, all by plainly stating that statutorily requires that which is file, which is file eminent domain proceedings in circuit court. The emphasis for this proposed change comes from a true fear that St. Louis competitors for the geospatial facility will seize upon the ambiguity of the current language to argue that NGA should disregard the city's site, suggesting it will never be certain L-CRA has a requisite approval, absent from the proposed clarifying language clearly defining when the approvals are required, and the ambiguous language lends itself to court challenges that aim. that aim to cause unacceptable delays and uncertainty for the federal government's project.
Anything, any further discussion on Amendment Number 1? Alderwoman from the 19th, recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I was just reading here and probably for those who don't have the document in front of them, I think it's important for us to read this paragraph in its entirety, other than just the words that have been changed, so everyone will have clarity.
Okay.
In Section 8, the plan for the area provides that the land clearance for redevelopment authority of the city of St. Louis, known as LCR, may acquire any property north of Cass in the area by the exercise of eminent domain under the condition that, and that's where we go back and we take out, as the Alderwoman from the 5th ward explained, we had only had a simple explanation for this, but now it's been improved and it doesn't allow LCR to go in and take anything, and it says, now it says, "LCRA shall not file eminent domain proceedings in the Circuit Court as to any parcel without prior approval of the acquisition of that particular parcel by the resolution of the full Board of Alderman following approval of that same resolution by the Committee of Housing and Urban Development and Zoning." So there are two additional steps that will have to be taken before any process can move forward to give the opportunity for those involved to have even more public hearing consideration and assistance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st?
Yes, well, Alderwoman from the 5th, yield to questions?
Alderwoman from the 5th, will you yield for questions to the Alderman from the 21st?
Yes.
Alderman, please proceed.
So, I'm having all the trouble understanding this, we went over this in committee and the language that you're changing today or seeking to change today was proposed by the President, and I thought it was a very good amendment which added protection to those folks who live in this target area who are fearful that the city may use eminent domain to acquire their home. One of the concerns that many of us had on the committee was that since there was no guarantee that we would actually see this project, that the federal government would actually choose this site as the location for the new NGA facility, that it would be irresponsible for us to possibly remove people from their homes using eminent domain and then we're just left with a chunk of land with no project. So the addition of this language to protect those homeowners came at the right time and it, I think, got the votes, it got my support in committee. So I guess I'm not understanding now is this additional language that you're talking about, where you, I thought the language was pretty simple before, it said that no parcel may be acquired by the exercise of eminent domain without prior approval of the acquisition of that particular parcel, and by saying a particular parcel, it meant that for each parcel, a resolution would have to be passed by this board, and now you want to change that to say that it only has to occur before proceedings in the Circuit Court? So can you explain how that changes, so how does the eminent domain process work and does this change this from having the resolution having to occur at the beginning of the process to having it happen in the middle of the process? Can you explain it, please?
Thank you, Alderman from the 21st, basically those protections that you spoke of, they are still there, there was just some ambiguity in the, in the use of the language as to acquire, and so I agree that, that the amendment that the President added, it was something that was possibly needed and we are, you know, going to do whatever is in our power not to even utilize eminent domain, but, you know, when we're trying to move forward as a body and tighten up our language so that no one can come back and wipe this thing from up under us that, you know, everybody is fighting for, you know, because the seriousness of it is, we stand to lose 3,100 jobs, we stand to lose $2 million in earnings tax a year, we've committed ourselves to helping these people who are living in this area and who will be affected by this process that I've been elected twice to represent, and so the list of requirements that, the legal requirements that are required for eminent domain, that hasn't wavered, that's still intact, we're just being proactive on our part to tighten up the language so that no one can come back, especially our competitors, and say, "Well, this doesn't necessarily say that you all have the rights to even acquire these property," I mean, we agree that it has to come back before HUD, that was a good move, because we're all about being transparent in this process and making sure that everybody gets taken care of properly. So I don't know if I answered your question in detail enough, I'm pretty sure you're real familiar with the eminent domain process and you read these bills, so basically nothing has changed, those same protections are there, it's as simple as tighten up the legal language so that we can be on better footing for getting National Geospatial Agency.
But my question is, is does this change in any way the timing of the resolution in the process?
No, it doesn't.
So in the, in the language before, it seemed, you know, it seemed as though that before in any way, any kind of proceedings in any way, or even the threat of eminent domain could proceed, that a resolution would have to be passed at this board on each particular parcel, and that, that I accrete-
All of that is still intact, I mean-
But let me finish my question, but with the additional language specifically saying "shall not file eminent domain proceedings in the Circuit Court as to any parcel, I guess it might be a question for an attorney and I-
Exactly.
And I wish it was, again, this is why we don't, especially this very specific legal language, it's probably better to debate this in committee than it is on the floor, but I'm just curious if this actually changes from the beginning of the process to somewhere in the middle, because what we really wanted to avoid was that the LCR can go and negotiate with these folks with the threat of eminent domain, under the threat of eminent domain, to say that you can, you must sell us your home or we're going to take it, that's what we want to avoid, and I thought that the existing language at least gave an added sense of protection, now I'm worried that this additional language may change that in some way, so I've got some concerns, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, just in response to that, people legally have to know that there's a possibility of eminent domain, again, you know, we sent this month, Wednesday, to the President's office so that we can have some discussions about that, nothing was talked about until today on that end, and I agree, it's definitely some legal language and we probably, you know, should have had some attorneys where they've looked at it, but, I mean, to make you all feel more comfortable about it, nothing has changed from what we originally said, we're not trying to circumvent the legal process in regards to eminent domain, we're not trying to trick shot anybody out their land, I mean, that's not what I'm about, that's not what the city is about, we're just simply trying to move forward and we're trying to move forward in the, in the best way and we want to make sure that the language is tight.
And Alderwoman, I understand the intent and, you know, sometimes we do things down here with good intentions that might have negative consequences, and again, I think that there would be little opposition at all if we were guaranteed that if we were to acquire this area, if we were even to use eminent domain, that we'd be doing that and we were definitely going to get this project, but I think the concern comes that it is not a guarantee that we'll get this project and that the possibility arises that the city of St. Louis could join other cities in the region that have used this eminent domain power, acquired people's private property, and then there wasn't a project at the end of it, and that's a very dangerous thing, especially when you're talking about people's homes, this isn't even just commercial property, this is actually where families live, so I understand the intention, I just have some questions about exactly the legal ramifications of the new language, and again, I wish we had discussed this in committee and not here on the floor.
Okay.
That's all.
Alderwoman from the 1st?
Alderman from the 24th was up way before me.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Okay, Mr. President, I'm not going to support this bill, but to the Alderwoman from the 5th defense, once you put eminent domain in there, there is always a threat, there's nothing in this language that says you can only use eminent domain if we get these jobs, okay, there's no, there's no sunset clause in there, there's no protection whatsoever, so once we pass it out of committee, don't, we cannot act like that we didn't pass out an eminent domain clause, because that's exactly what we did, okay, and I voted no on it, because I understood that that, we did not do what everybody says we did, okay, what we gave was eminent domain, and what we, only thing we did is say, "Well, it's got to come back here to the full board for a resolution and go back to HUD," we didn't say, "But it has to be only for if it's going to be those federal jobs," so it may be something else comes along, and we may not even be here because this board turns over and a whole new group of people might come along who don't know what the premises was, we have this conversation all the time, my roommate and I, because I've been here long enough, along with Conway, Rhodey and a few others, that we got a long history of what has happened in a lot of things, so we did not, we did not put the protections that is being purported out into the press, so we gave eminent domain and we did not say it has to be for these federal jobs, okay, so the only thing she is doing, and I'm not going to support it, but the only thing she is doing is saying specifically that LCR is the person who is the developer. Now, I guess my question's, and I was just trying to read back through Missouri revised statutes 523, which is about eminent domain, is that under, because we're doing a chapter 99, is that would there ever be another developer, because if we specifically target just LCR cannot seek eminent domain, could there be a chance, and that's what I was trying to look up, that there would be another developer?
A federal precedent.
And then they could say, "Well, that only went specifically to LCR and it wasn't talking to me," okay, and it wasn't addressing if I, Sharon Tyus came in and I became the developer, because the first thing didn't work out, so that is my question, can LCR pass that on, I was trying to look it up, but, 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 but we did not prevent eminent domain, so we shouldn't put that out there, we did vote for eminent domain out of that committee.
All right, Alderman from the 24th here, Alderman from the 11th?
Mr. President, may I inquire the lady from the 5th, please?
Alderwoman from the 5th, will you yield for questions to the Alderman from the 11th, Alderman from the 11th, please proceed.
Alderman, could you tell me who Development Strategies is or are?
I believe there was an entity that was hired by SLDC. That's correct.
Do we know any of the principals there?
I don't know them personally, I don't.
Okay, now, I, my, I've got a number of concerns, but I think more importantly, and there's no, no bigger jerk than I told you so, but X number of months ago, I stood here and said, "We took the first concert deal that came along," and that didn't work out so well for us, and I understand that our city agencies have put a lot of time and talent into this, if we could in fact land, I mean, the lady's end gain is meritorious if we can keep the mapping agency, that's hard to run against, but hard to be against. Let me, let me bring up, is there, give me a couple, do you have any idea who the key developers might be of some of this ground?
We wouldn't know that at this point, I mean, keep in mind, we're, we're working under the microscope of the federal government, we're, I'll be honest, they're pushing a lot of things down our throat, and I feel that this is ours to lose, so we're doing whatever we can to, to try to keep these jobs in the city, so that specific information on who the developer may be, that's something that's unknown at this time.
So, so if I look around the room and see some people that I know, that who knows that she knows that works for, who I know, I'm making a correct, incorrect, grossly incorrect assumption as to who these guys, that I called them at the now famous Birkenstock bill, you know, who are these guys, is that unfair on my part?
I mean, I, I can't answer that.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I, I, I like you better than your brother, I publicly said that.
A lot of people do.
Mr. President, thank you, thank you lady for your time.
All right, any further discussion, Alderman from the 4th?
Mr. President, I'm okay with Tamika Hubbard and the Hubbard family and what they do, and I was okay with this bill until I saw eminent domain. I am a product of eminent domain, in 1956, my father bought a four-family flat with 12 children living in it, they came down in the Mill Creek area on Spruce and Jefferson with eminent domain and said they were going to use eminent domain to put the highway, Highway 40 through there, they went over two blocks south and put Highway 40 through there, and the house that we used to own is an industrial park now. We moved in the Ville area in 1956 in a three-room house with 12 children, because we were forced to move quickly and to have a place to stay because of eminent domain. If this bill didn't have eminent domain in it, I would support it, but I cannot by any means, because I have a phobia, and this is why I ended up in the Fourth Ward, some of you are glad, or not glad that I ended up that way, but I have a phobia about eminent domain, and I still live in the Ville down the street from that house that we had to move in, we were forced to move in, three rooms with 12 children, nowhere to go, eminent domain, I cannot support.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would respectfully request a roll call on the motion to perfect this bill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So noted. Any further discussion, Alderman from the 24th?
Discussing the amendment, right.
Just amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 5th, you recognize the close on Amendment Number 1?
I would like to renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend Board Bill Number 263 Committee Substitute as amended, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracchia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Orpman, Alderman Ballmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
No.
Eighteen, I vote six, no vote, two present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from Alderwoman from the 5th and adopted Amendment Number 1. Alderwoman from the 5th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 263 Committee Substitute as amended, as amended or floor sub.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to move for perfection of Board Bill 263.
No, you already have that motion, you're just going to discuss it now.
Okay, so, in reference to Board Bill 263, I'd just like to give a little background information on how we got here, on June 6, 2014, the Board of Alderman passed Resolution Number 72 requesting that the NGA keep its jobs in the city of St. Louis when considering a relocation site, and basically this Board Bill approves a blighting study. If you, if you look at the totality of what we're dealing with here, I think it's important to understand when looking at this area, which includes undeveloped portion of Prudigo Site on the south side of Cass Avenue, 83.8% of the property in this area is vacant, 138 buildings still remain in this area, 66% of which are dilapidated or in need of major repair. Of the 424 parcels in the area, 80%- Of the 424 parcels in the area, 80% have poor site conditions. Since 2000, the area has lost 53% of its population. As a result, less than 90 occupied residential parcels and only 10 occupied commercial parcels remain. So, basically what we're dealing with here is a billion-dollar project in an area that has seen 60 years of disinvestment. The city needs to acquire 88 structures. Um, of those 88 structures, some are occupied, some, um, are businesses, but primarily the area is vacant. I know this is a, um, a tough issue for people to vote on and it's definitely my cross to bear because in the event that nothing does happen, um, we have, we possibly may have displaced some people to do this, but when you look at 3,100 jobs staying in the city, when you look at, um, $2.7 million in earnings tax that we stand to lose if we don't get this, when you look at the fact that 75,000 will be the average salary per employee at this place, then I, I think it's something that we should fight long and hard for and I think it's definitely something that is ours to lose. I'll be honest and say that, um, throughout this process, there are certain legalities that at this point has prevented us from really talking to some of the residents because there's a process to doing that. And I know that, um, as a, a resident, I would feel some type of way of, uh, the only thing I've known about this project is a few community meetings and a sign being plastered on a pole about a public hearing. But at the same time, when you look at what's, you know, the greater good out of this and, and how we can stand to benefit as a city, then I think it's worth it and, you know, people keep making eminent domain be the boogeyman in the room, but they're not talking about that SLDC is going to do whatever they can. They're going to borrow money to accommodate people in their homes. If they want to live in the area right adjacent to this site, they're going to do everything that they can do to give people, to be honest, more than what some of their properties are worth. So when you have certain people, um, play politics on the back of the people and invoke race into this, I, I feel a certain way about it because this is a community that my family has been in since the 40s and never would I play politics on the back of the people or be bought off or sold out. It's about 3,100 jobs. It's about the guy who may be walking down the street, you know, um, on dire straits, possibly getting a job, an entry-level job at this place. It's about growth. Um, we sit down here every day and talk about how, um, the, basically there's a Mason-Dixon line in our city, how you see all of this growth on one side and growth on the other side. So I just can't wrap my head around someone, you know, passing up a billion-dollar development deal in North St. Louis. That's huge. No one is looking at the overall economic impact. Those people who commute to this place, who possibly make their homes one day in this place, um, near this place, that, that's something to, to speak to and so I stand in support of it. Um, never would I be about, you know, taking a home from, uh, the old grandmother, you know, because that's, these are the images that some, some people are putting out there, like we're snatching people out of their homes. I have a grandmother, I have a grandfather that was born in 1917 and, you know, uh, we have a, a, a strong attachment to the 5th Ward and the Carr Square neighborhood and St. Louis place. And so I would just like to ask for support. Uh, this is ours to lose and I know it's a gamble, but it's a gamble that I'm willing to take and it's one that, you know, I don't mind taking the heat for because I understand the importance of it. Um, it's taking place in the 5th Ward, but it, this is in the best interest of the entire city. Those 3,100 jobs on Arsenal can leave and it's kind of sad that we're having these little hurdles at the Board of Alderman when in Illinois, everybody is unified and on board and ready to snatch this thing from up under us. And so if we don't move on this and if we don't get it, okay, then we have a well-assembled site of land and, you know, I, I, I'll never discount someone's, um, connection to their property and to their home, but, I mean, we, let's be honest, we have some homes that are the only home on their entire block and, you know, we have a lot of vacant area. And so we're willing to do whatever we can do. It's my intention to go talk to every homeowner that's going to be affected by this and see how we can come to the table. I mean, if we have to move their whole dwelling two blocks, um, north, we're willing to do that. And so I just, uh, would like favorable support. Um, I respect automatic courtesy. I would never go into someone else's ward and tell them what's in the best interest of their people, especially when you've been in a community all your life and, and you, you've walking past the dead bodies and know what the, the plight is of the people, that's something that I wouldn't do. And I just ask that, um, we understand what's going on here. It is a sensitive issue. It's a hard decision for me to make and I know we have some people who at no cost, they don't believe in eminent domain. But when you think about the greater good and you remove your personal views and yourself out the situation and you do what's in the best interest of everybody, I think that that's something that we need to consider. And at this time, uh, I'll take any questions.
All right. Alderman from the 24th, you recognize.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll, I'll just begin by saying, I mean, I, I certainly do not envy the folks who represent this area. I mean, clearly this is a, a difficult decision. Um, I don't, I don't, um, envy the citywide folks representing this area or the Alderman representing this area right now. Um, but I don't think we can, the, the reason I don't envy them is, I don't think we can talk about this without making note of the 60 years of crimes of incompetence that the federal government has wrought on this area, going back to 1954 when Prudiego opened after the, the, the first round of neighborhood destruction, um, in this area. Prudiego was an ill-conceived housing project that was then poorly managed to, um, compound the issues with it being ill-conceived. Then the federal government supposedly did us a favor by tearing it down, uh, in the 70s, but they didn't clean up the site. So 40 years later, nobody's been able to utilize the land except that there was a, there was a school built, but for the most part, the site is going unutilized because the federal government did a shoddy job cleaning it up and nobody's been able to take advantage of it. It's, it's, it's a, it's a tragedy of errors that's occurred here. You know, I, I, my guess is nobody's listening, um, in, uh, in DC, but this latest round is just insult to injury. The idea that in order to keep a federal installation in St. Louis that's been here for 70 years, it's now our job to move folks out of their homes in order to keep those jobs here? I mean, it's, it's a stunning act of cowardice by the federal government to tell us, this is the price we have to pay just to keep the jobs that are already here. It's outrageous and everybody should know that the fact that we're in this position is because of outrageous incompetence by the federal government and they ought to know it. And the fact, you know, the fact that we have residents here today who are affected by this, their government has let them down in a terrible way and it's happened for six decades. Now, nobody, none of us in the room want to lose those jobs. That, the earnings tax, the fact that the, the work is happening here, the earnings tax is accruing here, that's important to the City of St. Louis and nobody is going to, uh, deny that. But a lot of us also took a vote last year. We voted for reauthorizing the north side area on the condition that eminent domain was not part of the deal. How many times did we hear Paul McKee say, "It's not part of the deal. We're not authorizing eminent domain with this." That was certainly part of, I voted in favor of reauthorizing that, that project after it went through court. Um, and it's a vote I took some heat over. So, you know, now to come back, I don't know how many months later it is, maybe 12 months later, and say, "Well, we didn't really mean it. There actually is eminent domain." It's, 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 it's frustrating to me. You know, if, if, if we, if we sensed that this might be the case, Paul McKee shouldn't have said it a year ago. We shouldn't have made those indications, um, to people. So I don't know, you know, I don't know morally what the right vote is here. You know, I'm not sure what the best thing to do is. I just know that this is a sad, sad, and really just outrageous position the City of St. Louis has been placed in, uh, by the federal government and, you know, I, there's, I hope that, I hope, you know, I hope one way or the other the jobs stay here. I hope if people have to move out of their neighborhood, that they're compensated justly. My sense is they probably will be, but my sense is also the fact that it just shouldn't come to this. This shouldn't be the price you pay for the federal government, you know, delivering on, I, I think, promises that they made to us in the past. Um, it, it, it's this type of thing that I think erodes everyone's confidence in their government, in our local government, in the federal government, and it's, you know, it's, that's a tragedy in and of itself that people have to lose faith because this is the way, um, things operate. So, you know, I think everybody can determine what's best here, but I, I think, no matter what your vote is, I, I hope folks in, in Washington DC who put us in this position, in this position are losing some sleep over this because, um, it, it's really just the final insult to six decades of injury to St. Louis. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I want to commend the Alderman from the 24th Ward. You gave us, uh, what we should be looking at in the mirror, uh, where we've been and where we might be going. But at the end of the day, what I always look at is, but what can I do now? I can't continue to look behind me. I can have guilt, concern and question, but what can I do today? I've been down this road before, probably four times now, but you never heard anything in the newspaper about my projects. You never saw anybody marching or anything because there is a way to make it work and make everybody happy. That's what I'd like to see happen. The other part to this, and I shared this in committee, at some point, and you've heard me say this many times, we have got to educate our constituency much better than we do so that they can understand processes, they don't have to lose sleep at night, they know all and understand all their rights and don't get tidbits here and there that are confusing and also maybe misleading. Uh, the LC, LCRA process, that's us. It's not a developer, it's us, the city. When you work with the federal government, they will make the decisions about who their developer will be. We don't get to make that decision. Their projects require people who have a lot of expertise and knowing how they budget, what the expectations are, and I, and I had to go learn this myself. There are only a few folks out here in the country who actually develop for the federal government because they're that particular. And so in order to be certified to do that, you go through a lot and you better have a lot of experience. And on a project like this that requires so much security and all of that, they're going to select the top guy in the country, that's for sure. But aside from that, what I wanted to share with everybody is, when we give information, give, give the information in its totality, not just that that stands, because that's a problem. We create unnecessary grief for people. The Renaissance apartment project that used to be the Blue Mile, if you drive down Martin Luther King and look at the senior living building, you will see a tall, three-story gray stone building sitting there on the side. I don't care what we said or what we did or wanted to do again, they said no. When they went to the court part of the process, the court said, "You crazy because I'm not going to give you nearly what they were trying to give you." So they went back home and it was too late. It was too late to upgrade and get one of the new homes that we built for people. You know, it, it just, there's a lot more to this than just saying, "I'm trying to take something away from you." Because in many instances, a lot is given that improves the quality of life. And so we need to know all of it and, and, and not just get carried away on a word because there's a process and, and we even tighten the process with the amendment because it has, we, LCRA, us, have to come back before the HUD committee and before this full board. They can't even go to court, so that gives them even more reason that they better try to figure it out and make folks happy. Because they already know now, they got to come before us again. They can't even go to court first. So we put a, I think you put all the, the possible ways of protection in there at this moment, but again, we got a lot of stuff to look at from the past. We don't know what the future is going to bring, but we do have some control over today and how to improve the near future. And I pray for everybody's understanding in this. And I also wanted to share with the residents, uh, of the 5th Ward that I don't know any other way to say to you other than, if I'm still here, you're going to get everything that we can possibly give you because they have to come back before us. I moved homes, I did that too. I did what was necessary to make people happy and that's what you have to do. But I don't know, I don't know how we're going to get past this, but I do know that this is a project, if we are selected, which is another thing, and you're not thinking all the way through it. You see, we will be looking at securing the parcel area, but they will also be in the process of making their decision. So there may even be an opportunity, if we're not chosen, and we could go back and give property back, we don't know how that's going to look. But at the end of the day, let the process be as protective as possible and move forward. Thank you.
Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, first I want to address this, uh, what I call a fallacy, ours to lose. Um, I do not believe it is ours to lose. The President of the United States is from what great state? Illinois. His, he's elected from Illa-Noi and not where you grew up, where you were elected from. The, he was the state senator there. He was the, uh, not, no, he wasn't an Alderman, he was the, uh, not congressman, he was the senator there, US Senator. He is the president from Illinois. Big Durbin, very powerful senator in Illinois. Scott Air Force Base has things that they need. I do not believe, I think that is a, something that they put out there to say it is ours to lose. It was ours to lose when they decided they were going to close it in the first place. Um, the Alderman from the 21st, 4th Ward said, talked about the disinvestment or how Congress or how the federal people had not taken care of and were not, uh, watching out. We do at least have one congressperson who I received a email from, um, that would be our own right Congressman Lacy Clay, and I received an email from him the night before we took our votes to vote it out of committee and his email, I was just shocked. Never in life would I have thought I would have received an email from the congressmen telling me that, uh, let me just say what he said. Some board members have reservations about the site assemblies process, specifically the issue of eminent domain. I share their current, their concerns, but he goes on to say, "The project is essential to maintain city governments," and basically he supports the eminent domain. So we are getting some, uh, people from the federal government who are listening to, to it. Now, the other time I've seen a congressman down here in the 27 years that I've been dealing with the Board of Alderman was when Congressman Clay came, um, a year and a half ago to testify before the board to support this project. I kind of went through and did some research about this whole Paul McKee, now City of St. Louis project because I wasn't here for all of it, to just look at what had happened throughout the years. Because when I hear people talk about what we currently have, they act like that this has not been fluid. This thing has changed a million times, okay? And it, it may change a million more times, um, and of course I'm being exaggeration when I say a million, but it's changed many times. Um, and it's going to change probably many more times before there's something there. But, um, many, many years ago, Mr. McGee, sir, uh, went about in North St. Louis buying up parcels of land. Didn't know that he bought them because he bought them under many different names. And so he just bought those lands and he did nothing with them. And you, you want to hurt somebody's property value? You get an absentee landlord to come and buy property next to you and do nothing to it. And don't, and just do that for big parcels of land. And that goes on for many, many years. And that goes on for many, many years. Then Mr. McGee went to the state legislature and he got a special bill passed for special people who buy lots of land. And, uh, he can get a special, uh, what is this thing he got? He got, uh, a tax credit. We gave him a tip. He goes about, there's no way we can address that he has to fix up his land, much like LRA. You know, LRA is the big thing that's in our world. We have all these pieces of land, they don't fix them up. In the meantime, there are people, we, we act like, we don't want to talk about theirs as a history. I, I heard it said, well, it looks like that, uh, people are using a political, uh, to say that they're taking land from little old ladies, black ladies, but they are. The lady sitting next to me, Mrs. Taylor, I didn't know her until she came down to, uh, uh, just protest about that her land was going to be taken from her and that all this time we have been saying, "No eminent domain, no eminent domain." So I got to know she and her daughter and some of her friends and people who live in the area. I didn't have to go far. I've been down in that area rehabbing for 30 some odd years. Nobody else was doing it, I was down there rehabbing. We rehab buildings and they are on the tax rolls. Uh, and before I even got elected here, I, uh, years ago, my husband got a, uh, a, a interest, a low, no interest rate loan to do one of our buildings that's in Alderman-Bosley's, uh, uh, ward, and two weeks ago, probably, we made the $40,000 payment to pay the building off, brought it in. One of the few people that paid it off, they didn't even know what to do when I called them and said, "We got to pay our loan." They were like, "Uh, uh, uh." Because most times the people went bankrupt and didn't pay it back. We paid it back on time on the date that it was done. And that's my responsibility as a taxpayer and as an elected official to do that. So I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I've been down there, I've been committed to the area. So when she told me where she lived, I drove about three or four blocks from the property that I own, and I went to look at her property. Um, and I am, I, I, I love old buildings, I think they can be rehabbed, the 6th Ward has shown it, the 7th Ward, Hyde Park, Alderman-Bosley had talked about for years about the things that could be done, but I was already there when he was talking. When we started our project, uh, in Hyde Park, they were in the 2nd Ward. So they don't even stay in the wards, they changed and things are fluid. So I went to drive over, I really had not driven up into market. I drove, I drive down Jefferson all the time and drive by, but I had never made it personal, my personal business to drive up and down those streets. What I saw were beautiful houses. Mrs. Taylor has a beautiful house. I saw some that need to be worked, they don't need to be tore down, they need to be rehabbed. When I hear people talking about the disinvestment, it's not the 47 homeowners who disinvested. They planted their feet and they stayed there. They invested in their community while we as the federal government, the local government and the state government were failing them. We were failing them. This is personal for me. It's personal for me as a black woman who watched my grandmother not be able to own property. It's personal for me that she was a sharecropper and lost her husband and she raised her 10 children who all became very, very, uh, employed and raised us, the next generation. Um, none of them, except for one, got to go to college. And they could, my, my uncle had to come from Vietnam to give my grandmother her first piece of property. And how proud my grandmother was when she walked into that house that was hers. Because she had been denied the right to own property, denied the right to vote, denied the right to do anything. And here she was, a property owner. I know that pride because I live in a ward that's now mistakenly called the 1st, but it's really the 20th, in which there were a great many homeowners. And they have often told me over the years about them being the first homeowner in their, in their, uh, family or the second homeowner. We actually own my husband's grandfather's property that they bought in 1951. It's a four-family flat that we went back and rehabbed, and so we've had this property in our family for, since 1951. And I know the pride when I talk to people and they're holding on, my husband's grandfather, he was so proud of that property, he never would let us fix it up until, we never got to fix it up until he died. He was just proud that he, a black man, was able to buy property. So when I met Mrs. Taylor, and it's so interesting, Mrs. Taylor is the same age as my mother. My mother and she, birthdays are a few, uh, months apart. So when I look at her, I'm looking at my mother and the people that I represent. And I've been out of my community, and as soon as I say the word eminent domain, in my community, we have dealt with eminent domain, so let me be clear. I used it once. I used it where the Snooks deal is, but it was not used on land on which people lived in and homes, it was used on a vacant piece of property that had been closed for 20 years, 30 years. And even then, I gave that, uh, property owner so much space to, to negotiate with the Snooks people, um, before even the eminent domain issue came up. But after, uh, that was my early years, when I started talking to people about the effects of eminent domain, and I didn't, I didn't grow up here in St. Louis, so I didn't really know about, uh, Mill Creek. And then I, so, my husband is a city planner, so then I started studying what had happened in St. Louis with the devaluation of black people's houses and neighborhoods, and then saying, "Well, this is the easiest way to move because there's no value here, because there's only 47 houses here, there's a couple of churches here, there's nothing here." That didn't happen by accident, that happened by design. It didn't happen because the people who are keeping their homes up was doing something wrong, it happened because we were doing something wrong, we being the government. So when I hear people saying all these things, these people who are now getting ready to be, have eminent domain put on their houses, did nothing wrong. It is not too strong of a threat to talk about eminent domain as if, it is, as if we are misleading them. I've talked to Mrs. Taylor, she's not misled. She understands, she's been there every step of the way. She understands that we gave people an added gun to her head to be able to negotiate. And while we stand here and say what we will or will not do, there is no assurance that we will be here in the next week or the next month or, uh, the next term. So we cannot assure any such thing because we don't have that assurance ourselves. I hear about automatic courtesy, and I really would love to do automatic courtesy, but we can't talk about automatic courtesy and the greater good at the same time. You can't ask me about the greater good and say, "Give me automatic courtesy." Because, uh, the greater good, what you think is the greater good is not what the people who live there are what I think is the greater good. Um, we talk about jobs. If we move these 3,000 jobs and we put a new location, unless you say it's 3,000, we actually get it. I don't suppose that the people who have those 3,000 jobs are going to throw up their hands and say, "Let me get rid of my job," they're going to still want their jobs. So I don't see this great new, uh, amount of jobs. We talk about new homes may be built or may not, but, and how some people didn't get the new homes in certain wards because they waited too long. Everybody doesn't want a new home. I love my house, it is almost 100 years old. I love my house, I like that it's old. I like the real wood, I like the two and three tiers of brick, I like, I got a formal living room and dining room, I got the worst house on Mathis Place and I've worked for 25 years rehabbing it. I, you couldn't give me a new house, I would not want that new house. I don't care what it was, it could be one of those Mac mansions, it does not compare to me, to Mathis Place and my community. Does not compare to getting up and looking at my neighbors all the time. When this board gerrymandered me and took my, my community's right to vote and they took my community, I did, to the 24th Ward, I did not move. People said, "We thought you and Sterling were mov-, were moving." No, why would I move? This is my community, I am going to fight for it. So I give other people that same respect to know that when somebody buys a piece of property that many years ago they may not have been able to, and they invest 60 years into being there, and then we tell people, "But you don't understand, see, you could get a new house." But they don't want a new house because most certainly if they wanted one, as they watched the neighborhood deteriorate, not of their own doing, they could have moved most of them. You own, you could drive through any neighborhood, what people might consider bad neighborhoods. And it's always interesting to me that people consider North St. Louis bad neighborhoods, then they come into certain parts of North St. Louis and say, "Oh, I didn't know this was here." You don't know it because you've never been there. You don't, uh, uh, even assume that we are people over there living the same lives as you, wanting the same things. So the people could have moved, they didn't because they didn't want to. So I still, we still have black doctors, lawyers, judges living North St. Louis, okay? We have teachers, plenty, living North St. Louis. They don't want to move anyplace else, they're not looking to be, uh, displaced. So don't assume for them that they would be so happy to have what I call these paper houses. Because most of them don't want that. And in fact, many of my friends who have moved to the county have been backtracking back to the city because they love city life and they love the housing stock that we have. And so, and that's why, uh, many years ago, that's why the Central West End was rehabbed, that's why Soulor was rehabbed, that's why Lafayette Square was rehabbed, that's why we started on Hyde Park. All of that was because the, uh, value that you have with older houses that you don't get, or the neighborhood, the thought of being able to live next to a neighbor for 20 and 30 years. I lived next door to my neighbor who lived to be 102 for 20 some odd years before he passed away. And then his, his niece got the house, and she was in her 80s, she's 95 now. I love waking up and talking to my neighbors. I'm one of the newest people at my end of the block, and we've been there 28, 29 years, and most of the people call us the new kids on the block. That's stability, that's a love of neighborhood. Those are people who could be someplace else, they're not looking to be anyplace else. Now, you could go blocks away and you could see where, you might say, "Why are these people wanting to live here?" They're the only house on the block, they wanted to live here because it's their house they bought, and they're just as attached to it as anybody who lives in a brand-new house and thinks that's so great. Because it's theirs, property rights, that's very important to them. The other thing is as you get older, familiarity is everything for you, a lot of times. You need that concept, you need to be where you, uh, Miss Jones lives around the corner, you could go down to that little store that you've been dealing with, whatever, or around the corner, that becomes very important to you. Um, younger people might say, "Who cares about that, you can just move." And, but, everybody doesn't feel that way as you get older. You got to know, if you've been someplace 60 years, there's a love for that community. And while other people may devalue it and try to put it down and say, "For the greater good, we'll tear this down and we'll move you out," that is not the way to do it. I have said before, um, I was so impressed when I went to Chicago and watched, and I went with our planning department, um, and my husband, I said, "It's a planner," so he always used to go on these planning trips, and I would always see Don Roll and all the people there because I would take the trip and just have to pay for my flight, I could stay in the room with him. And so when Chicago was billing, building the Bull Stadium, they did a very good thing. They did not have the screaming and hollering, they sat down, they said, "We value your land, we know this is valuable land, we ba-" what can we do? Before they started doing all this stuff, so they sat down with the people and they moved, if their house wanted, they, they put some land that's right there on the edge of where the Bull Stadium, you can go there and see it to this day, and they either moved the par-, the pro-, the property or they built you a new one. So if you had a four-family flat, they moved it. So you got to be part of the investment. You did not get disinvested. Everybody always likes to do this urban renewal, and I call it urban removal. And I used to live at 579 Waterman, right around the corner from the 28th Ward Alder Woman, okay? Um, this, I don't even know if she lived there then, but I lived there when I first came here. And, um, so I got to watch the urban removal of black people in the, uh, 53, between Union and Skinker. And at that time, my current husband was not my husband, but he worked for CBA. And he told me then, because they did blighting with eminent domain, that those people, they said, "Oh yeah, we get these people, we're just fixing this up." They have not gotten back. I've watched, uh, if you look at the numbers from the Central West End, where black people used to be in the place from 60, 50, 60, uh, percent down to 20 and 30 percent, that came from urban removal of black people. I wasn't here for Mill Creek, but when you read about it, it's the same thing. There is a planned disinvestment in certain communities, and then when it goes down deep enough, we say, "Oh, well, this has no value." So now we can just run over those people, it's real easy. It's the reason that we push, uh, sales taxes down here instead of property taxes. Because property taxes will get the property owners all up in roar. So I've been at many meetings where they talk about the fact, "Well, we will push the sales tax because that's easier on us." So that's the same thing we do with planning and disinvestment down here. Um, I just want to go back to this whole process of Mr. McGee who was supposed to be the developer, and now we hear that it's the city that's the developer. But when we were hearing this thing and we gave him the tip, uh, and, you know, I have a real big problem with tips because they used to be agi-, the school board used to be against him until Big Brother took over. Now Big Brother says, "Oh yeah, tips are great." Um, but they, school board always used to lobby against him for years. Um, we gave him the, uh, Pruitt-Igoe site, we gave him an option on the Pruitt-Igoe site, which I still don't have. I was told at the meeting that we were, I was going to get a copy of it, still don't have it, I was going to get a digital copy of, of the, uh, agreement that they have with Mr. McGee about that he doesn't own it, that he just had an option. So, asked for it, still don't have it. Why don't I have it? Was told it could be sent to me digitally, told him at the meeting, "I can read it, don't tell me, Mr. Williams, what it says. Why are you tell, coming and telling me what something says? If that's what it truly says, then you ought to provide it to me and I ought to be able to read it." Mrs. Taylor was there, as the mem-, committee members know, I asked for it, still don't have it. Can't believe what you say, you asked me to trust you, but you don't trust me to read. Who should I believe? You or my own line of eyes when I read? Eminent domain, the ability of the government to take a person's real property against their will. At the end of the day, that's what it comes down to. When you don't have eminent domain, then you do what other people do. You can go into many developments and you'll see that one little house, which people always say, "Wow, they're crazy." But it's right there because that person didn't choose. You go, I go out to the movies a lot, out to West County, there's one little house sitting out there off of Manchester because they wouldn't move and they just built all around it. And so that happens sometimes, but they didn't have a gun to their head saying, "You have to move." That was a resident. Um, I have a lot less problem with eminent domain on vacant properties that are not owner-occupied, but when I hear, and what I heard at committee meeting was that there were 47 occupied houses and a couple of churches, I'm just speechless. This is, uh, I'm sitting here, uh, the month of Black History Month, talking about taking people's homes who, uh, many, a few years ago couldn't even purchase them, couldn't vote, couldn't do all of this, and now that I, we get in a position to supposedly do things different, and we do the same thing. You know, it's like talking about women's rights, then when you get a chance, you vote against women's rights, you vote against equal pay. I don't understand how that works. As I looked over what has happened here, um, it's been almost five years ago that we granted, uh, development rights to Mr. McGee. When he was granted this development right, he had never built anything in the city. As of today, I still don't see anything that he has done, not one single thing except for get development rights and get the ability for the city to keep forking over, or the state to keep forking over things that you should have. But I don't see one stick of anything. In the meantime, I have totally rehabbed my property in Mr. Bosley's ward. I'm not a multimillionaire, and so it hurt me because Mr. Bosley, uh, helped some other people rehab all around me, so I had to compete. But that's what you do in a capitalist society. So we redid our bathrooms, we redid our, uh, uh, kitchens, and we're competing. Um, and I'm happy to see the new people, I don't like that they're competing with me, but I'm happy. But I have rehabbed, I have done that, I've worked on, we've rehabbed like 10 apartments. I don't see anything he's done in the city. We keep acting like this is, oh, this is so great. So now the city is saying, "Forget Paul McGee, we're going to take, get that land back that he, uh, just bought from us, and we're going to do the land assemblies ourselves." That doesn't make any sense to me as a person who's been in development for a long time. That smacks of something else going on. I asked, uh, Mr. Williams, because I see certain people that used to, uh, that worked in, for, uh, government, floating around here lobbying people and pulling on people, I asked, "Are those people involved?" "No." "Oh, but then I find out they are involved because they work for somebody who works for Mr. McGee." We don't have anything right now that lets you know who, what player is playing on first base and what player is playing on third base. They float out here and we ought to be ashamed of ourselves, and I've asked that HUD on many occasions, "Well, who's the developer? Who's part of this?" "Well, we don't know, we don't know on purpose." That way the players to be can float out there mysteriously and we don't have any accountability. We need some accountability. Since Mr. McGee has had development rights for the last five years, what I don't understand is why wasn't he negotiating with owners then? Why wasn't the city? There's been plenty of time in these years to negotiate with people, um, and to try to get an understanding. In June in 2014, the NGA confirmed that it was closing the South City location, and it said it was going to relocate its employees to a site yet to be determined. There were six potential sites, it's so interesting to me, St. Clair County near Scott Air Force Base, Benton, Melville, North St. Base, Benton, Melville, North St. Louis City, Paul McGee, North Park, Berkeley, Paul McGee, Weldon Springs. Well, North Park and Weldon Springs were taken off of it, so one of Paul McGee's sites were taken off. But I tell you, two out of six is not bad, one-third of a chance to be part of a development when you've not done anything in the city, not bad. That's interesting. In order to make the fifty-acre requirement, the City of St. Louis has decided to develop a site under Section Ninety-Nine, in which the City of St. Louis through LCRA is gonna be the land assemblage. That's pretty standard. Except for Section Ninety-Nine says some very specific language, so when we go about talking about how we're gonna amend a language through ordinances, we gotta be real careful, because our ordinances do not override state law. So, to be careful what you do, because people come back and laugh at us later and say, oh, you did that in here, you put this in here, but you have no right to do that. I asked about, because there had been some rumors out about the, the, uh, profit that Mr. McGee would make if the city gets this property back, and so, I heard a ridiculous amount, and I have been assured by, um, Mr. Williams, is that's not true. Um, so, that remains to be seen. But again, just what the Alderman from the Twenty-Fourth said, we have said, no imminent domain. So we, we relaxed these people into a false state of, okay, whatever's going on, there's not gonna be imminent domain, and then we said, there's a fire going on, and we're ready to take your property. And we're ready to do, to take forty-seven occupied homes and some churches and businesses. And also, what we did that I particularly also offended at, we added demolition language into that, so that they could go around heritage, so that they can demolish immediately. They get this property, they got the right to demolish, instead of another layer of protection has been peeled back. So, we did that in committee, which I also was supposed to. I got a synopsis of a Board Bill Two-Sixty-Three and Two-Fifty-Nine from the mayor's office on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, Twenty-seventh, rather, right before we held the HUD's, uh, committee me- had the HUD's meeting on Wednesday, Twenty-Eight. There was not enough support to pass that bill out of committee, and it was held. Then we had a Friday morning meeting, and, uh, it's so interesting, our politics, it went from, we had four strong no's to one no. I'm really disappointed in that process. I'm disappointed, because I don't, everybody has a right to vote the way they want to, they all got elected, but they gotta be real careful about how you flip in and out, and you are dishonest, and don't tell the truth, because you destroy your relationships with people when you do that. My roommate and I, we don't vote the same, but she will tell you, I, we have great talks, because we're honest with each other, and that means a lot in politics. And so, the whole way that, that, uh, Board Bill came out of committee, I'm embarrassed as a black elected official, I'm embarrassed as a member of the Board of Aldermen, and I'm embarrassed that we told citizens for five years that there would be no imminent domain, and now we come and say, in order to, for the greater good of the city, we have to punish the very people who have been victimized in their neighborhoods for years after years after years of disinvestment. Not, not them, because you go to their houses, they got nice houses. The other people who left were other people, but also the city not making people keep up with, uh, property, not making them do whatever they do, not finding ways to invest, taking the block grant money that was, if you go and look at the block grant money and the applications, it should not have been going downtown in the Central West End, that's one of the neighborhoods it should have been going to. And so, we, in this United States, often have a way of blaming victims. If a woman gets raped, we ask, well, what was she wearing? Uh, how was she acting? She should have been doing this, she should have been doing that, so much so that we have to pass laws that, uh, which I'm, that says that unless there's an affirmative yes, it's a rape, because people always find a way to blame the victim. I don't think of Mrs. Taylor as a victim, but I think that she's being victimized. I love people who fight for their neighborhoods, who stay there, and who don't throw their hands up and say, I'm out of here. We ought to be celebrating those people, we should not be, uh, telling them, well, thanks for nothing, but we're going to take your home, we're gonna hold a ga- gun to your head, and we're going to take your home if it means jobs for other people. That is not a good way to do business, and it's not a good way, uh, to say five years, no imminent domain, and then come back and say, we gotta do this. And the, many, many years I've been down here, we always do that, we always come up with a reason of why we have to change it. We're gonna gamble, but we're gonna have this low amount of what you can gamble. Then we come back a few years later, when everybody's forgotten the promises, and we do something different. And so, nobody down here can promise what will be. We put this imminent domain in here, it is a very dangerous, wrong thing to do, um, and I'm appalled at how we did it, out, got it out of committee, and the people who, they know who they are, ought to be ashamed of themselves of what they did. And I don't need to call any names, because you know who you are. And I'm so sorry to Mrs. Taylor and all her neighbors, that, uh, happy Black History Month, we already know this history, we know it from Oklahoma, from the Twentieth War, from many, many, from Mill Creek, we know this history. Um, but I, as black elected officials, would never support this, and I, even if I was a white elected official, would not support lying to people in the community of what would not happen, and then doing it. I cannot imagine the Italians on the Hill doing this to the Hill, I couldn't imagine, uh, Irish over in Dogtown doing this. Before, we can ask people to love our, us, we gotta love us. We have shown a total disgust and disregard for people in our community and their right to own property. And we also, same thing with the right to be able to vote, we discard, we get with the crowd mentality, and we do the same thing that we see some black police officers do, the black politicians do the same thing. I'm truly ashamed, and I want to extend my apologies from the bottom of my heart, because this is wrong, it's wrong, and it's not race-baiting, it's history, you can go look up your history. It's, when you talk about history, I read what Chris Rock said, and it makes sense, he said, have you ever noticed that the system tells people, when you start talking about racism, stop talking about racism? They don't ever say, stop being racist. The system is more interested in you not talking about racism than ending racism. And that is what is, goes on many times down here. And for that, that and other reasons, I will not support this deal.
Alderman from Twenty-Fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, back in July, when we first really started talking about the, uh, NGA site moving, uh, the Post Dispatch ran an editorial. Uh, the editorial said that Pruitt-Igoe is the only site for geospatial agency relocation. It went on to, uh, even criticize elected officials, uh, and told them to put politics aside, to make sure this thing happened, it was the most important thing for the region. Uh, one thing I want to make very clear, that a lot of folks who were not in the hearings of these bills, uh, should know, is that this development area, uh, where the proposed relocation site is for the NGA facility does not include Pruitt-Igoe anymore. Uh, that, in fact, while it's still technically included in the development area, uh, the actual plans for what the new NGA site would be are actually between CAS and St. Louis Avenue. Uh, and that the Pruitt-Igoe site itself will still remain until something else happens. Now, uh, folks from SLDC said that they hope that, uh, if we were to be awarded this NGA site, that that new renovation and development in that area might help spark some rehabilitation of the Pruitt-Igoe site. But the conditions that have, uh, left Pruitt-Igoe in its current state for many decades remain. Uh, there still is gross contamination, expensive costs in renovating that site, uh, great expense in turning it into anything other than what it is right now. Um, and Mr. McGee, who was given a, a very low-cost option on that land, uh, still has not figured out how to do something with it. Uh, and even with the possibility, as has been said, of this billion-dollar project, uh, they still haven't figured out how to include and improve the Pruitt-Igoe site in that. So the Pruitt-Igoe site will still remain what it is under this current plan, I just want to make that clear. Um, secondly, uh, I guess it was almost six years ago, when we stood here in this very room and debated this, uh, Northside regeneration project, uh, and I remember taking the floor as I voted against the deal, and I said that, while we don't know for certain, long-term, what the effects will be, maybe Mr. McGee will be successful in this very ambitious project in the very long term, what we do know, that in the short term, that the situation will be made worse. And over the last six years, that situation for those folks that live in that area have been made worse. Their property values have continued to decline, many people have left that area, because they don't want to live next to the conditions of Mr. McGee's properties, and the population has further declined. And as a result, which is important in terms of this bill, is that their property values and the fair market value that they would be offered in any kind of imminent domain is much less today than it was five years ago, ten years ago, or before Mr. McGee started acquiring property in that area. Uh, and I think that's important to keep in mind. The other thing is that, um, in the questioning of, uh, the sponsor and of the folks from SLDC in the committee hearing, one of the things we asked, which really clear up a lot of this, is, why do you need imminent domain, especially if we don't know for certain we're gonna get the NGA project? Is there a way that we can, uh, for instance, sign, uh, sales contracts with options on these properties? And if we do not, uh, aren't successful in getting the NGA, uh, deal, that we can not exercise the options, and those folks can stay in their homes? Uh, we were told that that was not possible. We were told that, um, the federal government would not accept an option, uh, for the terms of, uh, site control. Um, I wish we had an opportunity to have a second opinion, uh, I wish we had our own legislative research office, or lawyers who could give us an independent opinion, but as it is, we can only rely upon SLDC and their, um, interpretation. Um, that will clear up a lot of this, but as it is right now, as the Alderman from the First stated, what we're being asked to do is take a gamble, and we're not just putting our own chips on the table, we're putting other people's chips on the table, homeowners, uh, people who've lived in their homes for a long time, and in fact, have made the decision to stay in that area despite all of the stuff that's been going on around them for many years, despite all of the demolition and derelict buildings, a lot of those owned by Paul McGee, that have been going on around their homes for years, they stayed. Those are city taxpayers today, those are folks who we work for today. Uh, and I think we need to take every effort to respect their rights, um, to take into consideration, uh, and respect them as St. Louisans, as city residents, as property owners. Um, and so, I, I am concerned that we might authorize SLDC to go borrow money in the name of the city, up to eight to ten million dollars, is what we were told, to acquire not only the vacant lands from private homeowners or private property owners, but then also possibly use or threaten the use of imminent domain to purchase at a deflated market value land from homeowners, um, many of whom have come, have some today, uh, have come repeatedly asking for help, asking for us to respect their rights. Uh, and so that concerns me. And so, with the amendment, uh, that was offered and passed a few minutes ago, uh, that alters that imminent domain language, uh, I can't support Board Bill Two-Sixty-Three. Uh, I, I felt more comfortable with the language that the president had offered, uh, that protected people's rights, that would have to, uh, that would require that for every parcel, each individual parcel, that SLDC wanted to use imminent domain power, they would have to come down here and get fifteen votes. I mean, fifteen Aldermen would be on record authorizing imminent domain for that person's house, and they have to look at them in the face. I felt better about that, because that's a much higher threshold. I'm not certain about the effect of this new language, and I don't appreciate it, that it was brought up at the last minute, uh, and that we did not have a chance to consider it in the committee, didn't have a chance to have outside counsel look at it, didn't have a chance for citizens to look at it, who were being affected by this. Uh, and so, I would just, I would just advise everybody who is gonna vote one way or another on this, is that, you know, we are voting possibly to kick somebody out of the house. Uh, and I think here in the City of St. Louis, we should be better than that. You know, vacant land, unfortunately, vacant land and vacant homes are not rare in the City of St. Louis, and that we feel like we have to kick somebody possibly out of their house in order to get this deal done, in an area that it was not originally said we were gonna be in. Originally, they said it was gonna be Pruitt-Igoe, if it was just gonna be Pruitt-Igoe, we'd all agree with that. We would all love something to be done with Pruitt-Igoe. But to be clear, this project no longer is about Pruitt-Igoe, it is about those neighborhoods next to Pruitt-Igoe, uh, and I can't support it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from Twenty?
Mr. President, members of the board, I voted for the, um, amendment to, um, Board Bill Two-Sixty-Three Committee Substitute, because I felt that it, um, was more specific and told the precise moment when LCRA would have to come before the Board of Aldermen, so that there wouldn't be lack of clarity, and so, after they started going through the courtroom processes and all the rest of it, they might decide to sort of come down here and get these approvals. So this, in fact, in my mind at least, and I hope in others, made it more specific that LCRA could not file imminent domain proceedings in Circuit Court, that's a very specific point in time, without the prior approval of that acquisition. I stand up today unlike what I usually try to do. Often, I stand up and try to present a logical, compelling, motivational, persuasive argument or discussion. I'm not trying to convince anybody of anything today, what I, what I'm trying to do is sort of share with you this mental struggle that I am hearing from other colleagues as well, of this very gut-wrenching dilemma that we're faced with today. As part of that, I would like to ask, because the Alderwoman from the Fifth made some statements during her presentation, and I'd like to get some more clarity, Mr. President, if she would yield to some questions for that purpose.
Alderwoman, will you yield for questions? To the Alderman from Twenty, Alderwoman from Twenty, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Alderwoman. So, uh, you did mention, um, moving houses, and I, I understand that in the negotiation process, uh, when someone's trying to make a bona fide offer on a house, that that certainly is an option, it raises the cost. Is there anything in Board Bill Two-Sixty-Three Committee Substitute that would require that
I don't believe that there is, but, I mean, we have, uh, totally agreed to, um, and through SLDC, and I don't want to speak too far into their land, but I know that, um, they're gonna be, um, very, um, for lack of a better word, loose with, you know, how they try to accommodate people. I, I, it does, uh, call for relocation fees as well, and, um, the part about moving an actual dwelling, that, that came up in committee, and, uh, like you said, that is an expensive process, but I think if we get down to it, and someone is so, um, you know, in touch with wanting to be in their actual dwelling, I couldn't really imagine it, but if, if that's the case, we would accommodate them e- every way that we can.
All right, so, would you be open to considering language in Board Bill Two-Sixty-Three that would require that?
At, at this point, I will not, because I, I have faith in the process that we are all above-born in trying to make this thing work. Um, I, I understand the extra protections that people, um, are concerned about, and, you know, in, in being concerned about them, I, I think it, at some point, it, it sends a message to, uh, my constituents, that our system down here is so botched, that we don't have any good faith or effort, and I, I, maybe I haven't been around long enough, but I don't just, I don't feel that, and, and as the elected person to represent these people and on their behalf, I'm gonna be involved, um, in this process as much as I can, to make sure that everybody is given, um, what they should get in regards to their homes.
And Alderwoman, I, I appreciate that, and I, and I believe that you would very much be part of that process. Let me ask this, um, and I had thought about this before I, um, uh, the Alderman from the Twenty-Fourth mentioned this, um, and I thought about- about two separate sort of opportunities that might avail themselves. So when a developer wants to do something, my understanding is they want to make sure that there's control of that property. There's a number of ways of getting control of property, and one is to have, you know, fee simple absolute of that property, and they can get that through the court action and so forth. I think there might be a couple of other options, and one of them is an option, an option on the property that has specific provisions so that if, in fact, NGA does not select the best site, which is this site, that people are not moved out of their properties and then the property is then sold for market value probably to somebody else. Or another one might be a contract for sale with some very specific triggering situations, those situations being that the federal government does in fact, need, want, desire, and is going to use this site for that. So I didn't see anything in there that would allow control of the site by options or a contract for sale.
And I'm glad that you brought that up, because clearly, those are some conversations that we've had several times with them, and it's unfortunate that they want complete site control and they were not willing to offer an option. And these are conversations that SLDC has been having with the federal government. And so it's unfortunate, but I mean, that's how we're operating at this point, and it's not on doing it for our own. It's something that's been passed down to us.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I don't have any more questions for you right now. So oftentimes, when we're talking about taking down a historic building or a number of historic buildings, we look at what the opportunity is for us in the future in terms of that new development. It is rare in our city, which treasures people and buildings and the history and culture of our city, that we just say, okay, go ahead and just, although this happened years ago, through urban renewal or whatever, just tear down these buildings on the if come that something better or something very good would be built in place of this wonderful historic building. So when it comes before the Preservation Board or goes to Cultural Resources, as I understand it, they do look for what is it that's going to replace this. We are being told that there's one of, that this is one of five sites that the federal government is looking at, and we hope to position ourselves, and I salute the Alderwoman from the fifth, as well as our city in terms of trying to position ourselves well, to try to keep NGA. I mean, I know that we all, and I was one of the major, you know, drum majors on this thing, to try to keep NGA. I am not happy that it wants to move out of the ninth ward. It's very close to the ward I represent. We have residents who, great residents, leaders in our community, who have jobs and employment there. So as I say, this dilemma that I have, and this gut-wrenching struggle that I have that I'm sharing, is that, you know, we're asked to say, okay, jobs and people's homes, you know, and how does that all balance out? If we had, clearly, if we knew that NGA tomorrow was moving to this site, I think that balance there could be used in a fashion to show the greater good, absolutely. But the struggle that I have is that it's on the if come, and that we, for whatever reason, it doesn't sound like the federal government is just asking for control of this site. They want absolute control of this site. That, I mean, if you have the right triggering provisions within an option contract or a contract for sale, it would seem to me that that should be sufficient, particularly when you haven't made the decision to actually move there. So we, you know, around the kitchen table, my family has had discussions, and Alderman from the fourth ward, your family was moved from Mill Creek, and my family was moved from where Highway 55 came through, okay? Highway 55 was pretty much a known entity, and so people knew that was going to happen. This is sort of like Plato's shadows. This is, we don't even know definitely that NGA is moving here. And that's the struggle that I have. So what we'll be doing is, hopefully what will happen, and often this is the case, people will see that this is a tremendous opportunity to improve their family's future, that they will accept the offers for sale of their homes, and they will get a wonderful place to move and to live, and that we will also have the NGA. But my concern is that we may not get the NGA because there are four other opportunities. As I said, I am not trying to convince anyone today how to vote. I'm sharing my struggle, both mentally and in my gut, about this process. Yes, we want NGA to remain here. It makes every sense for them to remain here. When we've looked at this in the past, we've looked at it as a Pruitt-Igoe site. And as part of that Pruitt-Igoe site, there may be some additional parcels that would need to be made part of that. But without clarity and without knowing that in fact, we're going to get the jobs, that all we may do is move people out of their homes, this makes it very much a gut-wrenching dilemma for me. And some others have already reflected on this, that, you know, previously, we have been promised that there weren't going to be eminent domain procedures. We have not been faced with needing to use eminent domain, and I have not wanted to use eminent domain in the ward that I represent. I understand that it is sometimes necessary when there may be one or two houses and there are thousands of other locations and a great project for 3,100 jobs. But this situation is much more tenuous, much more gut-wrenching, and truly a dilemma for me.
Alderman from Lovett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to briefly express some more reasons why I don't think this is in our best interest. You know, the world has changed, and we don't have the congressional clout we used to, and we don't have the population we used to, and we don't control the Congress. I'm an English teacher that went bad, but you tell me, who's going to have the clout when they go ask for this thing? Is it going to be Metro East, where they just took former Congressman Costello and Congressman Nyerseidaway? That's pure speculation, and I guess I'm entitled to do that. I question the amount of money on this parcel of ground that it will cost to contain the water runoff. It will be multiples of millions of dollars. MSD, you have to do your own retention pond, I'm very familiar with it, I'm working on something right now, and it just is going to cost a whole, whole bunch of money. And I don't know the percentage of property that Northside Regeneration owns, but if you look through your bill, does anybody know the percentage of those parcels that is controlled by Northside Regeneration? And I'm reluctant to use anybody's last name because I don't know who Northside Regeneration is. It's not funny, Alderman from the first. Does anybody have any idea what, it's a bunch. Why don't we say that? We'll use a South Broadway term. So it's a bunch. And I thought CDA and LRA, I can just speak for my, we got way too many lots now. And then in closing, you don't, you know, it's no, when you start getting into personalities, and that's why I can do this, because I don't have one. But the issue is, if I'm doing business with somebody who just continues not to produce anything tangible that I can go over and slap, that I can go over and dig into, that I can go over and see some bricks, I mean, this guy makes, I'll date myself, you know, Mandrake the Magician look like Skippy. He keeps coming back and we keep acquiescing. And there comes a point when you simply have to say, you know, we need something tangible. And what we're doing here, and this is, you know, I'm, this is a surprise, I'm getting up in years, but what we've done, even with the amendment, we're just going to backdoor our ability to get at that ground. We just have to do it slower. That's what the amendment did. I mean, just read the amendment and then look at the bill and the number of parcels. So I'll be out of resurrection, probably, if I holler when they get this number put together. But the point is, I'm going to punch you in the nose, so the question is, am I going to punch you in the nose next Friday, or am I going to punch you in the nose on, you know, first of October? And I don't know, again, SLDC, do they, do they sit down with this gentleman and ask him, please, please, show us something tangible that you've accomplished so that we can invest in what you want to do? And you know what the answer is, Room 200? He's the only show in town. He's the only one doing anything, but he's not. I mean, the perception is he's the only one doing something, but, you know, let's see, we'll jump in the Alderman from the fourth's limousine and go look for something he's accomplished after the meeting. So, Mr. President, I certainly don't want to get flipped. I have a great deal of respect for the lady from the fifth. She's, she really, she tries hard, and this is not Aldermanic courtesy on my part. I know she knows what's best for her ward, and I like to think I know what's best for mine, but I just think this is fiscally not prudent, and I think it's ill-advised, and I think if we go back to the drawing board, we can get something that makes better sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I didn't want to make a public declaration, but a lot of people who've been in the room with me in meetings know how I feel about Paul McKee. It's not nice, it's not pretty. That's why I can stand here and honestly say, I don't care about Paul McKee. He knows that. He knows that clearly, because you all know how I can get when you get on my nerves. He knows that clearly. I want a donation from him, I don't want him to say no to me. But this is not about Paul McKee. This is not his project, this is not his project. I don't care if he never gets another parcel. He knows that, I've told him that. And right now, the few parcels that I have in my ward that support us, the North Generation, whatever it is called, because I stopped even trying to quit my brain, I put a covenant on it, control it, get it before my community, my high school, everything, to get approval for if and whatever, maybe in sometime in the future that I might not even be living or breathing. So at the end of the day, I can't go for this. This is not him. Now, I can read everything anybody has said about him. I like his wife, she's a lovely person, she's lovely, I like her. Mitch, that's right. Again, I took all that out of here. But at the end of the day, this is not him. He'd have a hard time convincing people for anything for him, so, and he knows that. But what we've got to do is separate and understand our, I don't want to be an officer said, but because we put the additional stipulations in here that you've got to come before the Hudson and full board, it is not likely you're going to get no 15 votes for eminent domain down here. That's not going to happen. Everybody has to come up for reelection, let's just talk about how it really is, all kinds of stuff, and they are not going to do that, because the one time that we did have a process that has eminent domain in it, people marched to carry it on, so, I remember about 10, 12 years ago, and I'm not going to even talk about what ward or what all the person, but it's not pretty if you have to go through that. That's why we figured out ways to make it work, because you don't want to go through that. That's not anything you want to do. You're not going to, you're not going to sit here and agree to be a part of that. And that's why I'm glad we put the additional stipulations in here. But again, this is not a Paul McKee project. I don't particularly know or understand, oh, yes, I do, because people don't like him, number one. I can understand that part of it. Number two, we don't believe any things are going to ever get done. We've been cussing around way forever. I know I've been dealing with this project off and on, his project, not this project, his project, for 15 years. So I like to get things done, so I move forward. But this is us, L-CRA. And I know from going through the federal process on two other projects, what their requirements are, and nobody's going to believe anybody about that. That's exactly what we had to go through, with the hospital and the Blue Mile project. So it's not, they're not doing anything any different than they normally do. And most especially when you talk about their facilities. They can't get the money allocated unless they have absolute control. It's a whole congressional process that takes about three years, really, and I think we talked about that in committee, too. The has, and so you've got to have the land assemblage, and you've got to have ownership to present to the proposal and the process. But at the end of the day, this is not Paul McKee. This is L-CRA. This is us. And we got to keep that clear. This is us. And we're not going to do anything to damage ourselves in the future or hurt anybody in the future. And we talked about that in the committee. We talked about moving people's homes if they wanted it. And you know, I've envisioned a lot of things. If there were two or three people that wanted to move their homes onto a block that had some additional lots there, maybe they got some extra lots for their home, or they could even have a nicer landscape and all kinds of stuff. I mean, you got to, that's how I think. I don't know about anybody else, but that's how I think. And so I don't always go to the absolute negative. I try to keep myself in the positive because that's the only way I can help you ultimately. I don't close my mind, I got to be open, I've got to be thinking positive, I got to know that I can, I can wake up every morning and make that next step so I can do better for you. And that's where I'm going to stay in this process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from 28.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You know, I have hesitated to speak about this because my concern is that the federal government will hold it against us. You know, most of you know I'm an accountant, I never talk bad about the IRS because I don't want them looking me up, you know? This is the same kind of thing. But since the subject has been being discussed for the last hour or so, I think adding my comments won't make it any worse. You know, in my mind, Pruitt-Igoe was a federal government project. They pulled out, they left us with a mess. They've left us with a mess for many years. Now, NGA, which has 3,100 jobs, I believe, down just east of Anheuser-Busch, now, another federal entity, now they've decided, oh, we don't like it here, or the security's not good enough, or whatever, we're going to pull out. And it's likely that, you know, over the years, somehow or another, we're going to be left with another mess to solve there. I don't think that's fair to the citizens of St. Louis, and I don't think it's fair that we have to pay, we will have to pay, for improving those sites so that they are When the federal government first put out this proposal for, oh, NGA's going to move, do you want to, you want to, want us in St.? It required, I think, 40 or 50 acres. I might be a little bit wrong in that. And that seemed like a really good idea. Here we've got this problem the federal government left us with, well, maybe they could, but of what's fair here. I think it's a rotten choice that we have to make. If we don't have the luxury, I think, today of saying, well, I don't like the choice that is before me, so I'm just going to vote no, and by doing that, if you do vote no, you are saying, in my view, okay, NGA, go ahead and go somewhere else, go to Illinois, go to Fenton, go to wherever the other sites are looking at. I mean, we don't really need your 3,100 jobs here, and we don't need the, I think it's 2.7 million, 2-point-something million. 2.7 million, uh, 2. something million of earnings tax. Uh, I, I mean, that's really, that's a heck of a choice that we are faced with here today. And while I think that that is not a fair position to put us in, and not a fair position to put the, uh, citizens of the city of St. Louis in, it is the choice that is before us. And, you know, I would just ask all of our colleagues to think about that. It's not fair that they have also said, I forgot to mention this in the list of unfairnesses, it is not fair that the government has said to us, oh, you have to actually own this land, every parcel. You can't have an option, you can't have a sales contract, you can't have, you actually have to own it. I mean, I don't really, I don't usually personalize things this much, but I'm really starting to think, really? Why are you doing this to the people of the city of St. Louis? Why are you moving out and leaving us Pruitt-Igoe? Why are you moving out of, uh, the site on South Broadway and, and presenting us with these really difficult things that we have to do if we just wanna save 3,100 jobs? You know, 3,100 jobs is a pretty big deal. And that earnings tax is a big deal. And if we have those jobs in St. Louis, the folks who have those jobs will be much more likely to go to lunch in the area, or they're dry cleaning, or pick up groceries, or, you know, all of the related ancillary services. So, while, on one hand, I can think of a lot of reasons to vote against this, I think that if you do, you're putting the burden on your fellow elected officials to try to save these jobs and make the hard vote. It's not a vote that I wanna make, but I'm gonna vote for this today because despite all of those bad choices, I do think we have to care about jobs, and we have to care about earnings tax, and we have to care about redeveloping North St. Louis. And, and I think it is absolutely true that, I believe the Alderman from the Twenty-Fourth, uh, said, what, what was the phrase? Uh, it was really good, I wrote it down somewhere, but, you know, bad decisions over the years. And I think that that is really true. But the, the question that is before us, which is not one that we ask for, is, are we gonna keep ourselves in the running for this big, big employer? Or are we gonna say today, and if we vote this down today, what we have said is, um, okay, you wanna leave, go ahead and leave and take your jobs with you? And that's just not a choice that I can make. I have had this same conversation with the administration and with, with Mr. Williams over the last months, maybe it's however long we've been talking about this. I know that they have tried to get the rules of this game changed so that we don't have to own that property, so that we can have options. I know that they have done that, and, and they have been told no. That you either have the property under control and you get the bigger acreage, or you're out of the running. That's not right, but that's the way it is. So, um, I think the Alderman from the Fifth Ward has done a really good job of explaining this to us. Uh, you know, I, I really sincerely have hesitated to get up here and say all the things that I think are unfair choices for this. But here we are, and this is what we have to do today, and I'm not willing to vote against this because I don't like the choice that I have. It is the choice we have, and so I'd like to, um, I'd like to keep N G A in St. Louis. And, um, I hope you'll join me in supporting for this bill.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the Twenty-First.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I appreciate the comments of the Alderman from the Twenty-Eighth, and I agree with her in that, uh, this is a difficult choice that each of us are gonna have to make on how we cast a vote. Um, but I do disagree, I think, with how she characterized this as, you know, it's just a choice of if we want the N G A jobs or not. I don't see it that way. All right, like I said before, this is not a guarantee that we're gonna get that project. It is a gamble, all right? And so the question for me, as I interpret it, is what am I willing to ante up? And am I willing to ante up the property rights of a St. Louis citizen who's lived here, who expects our city, uh, to defend her rights, uh, just for the chance to play at the big boy table? And for me, I, I'm not willing to do that. Not just for a chance. Now, it would be a completely different vote if it was absolutely we are getting the N G A if we pass this bill. But what we might find ourselves in, in the situation that we often see ourselves in is that we're given these choices down here, these false choices, we pass, uh, the big bill, and it doesn't pan out, it just doesn't pan out. And so what happens? We risk that we have kicked somebody out of the house, we risk that we have flattened a neighborhood, because this does have the authority to demolish buildings now, don't even have to go through the preservation review, uh, uh, system. Uh, and we will have done all of that and still not have that project. And so, you know, maybe we just value those homeowners differently. Um, you know, if it came down to the city just needing city-owned land and a large portion, let's give them a piece of forest park. If that was, if that was on the table, I imagine the Alderman from the Twenty-Eighth might look at it differently. I'm sure she has a, a higher value on that land, uh, and I have a higher value on the land of the folks that live in this community, uh, and who have historically, and as Alderman from the First brought up, this is not the first time this has happened. We have done this over and over and over in this city, about what we do in St. Louis, regarding American neighborhood. We do this repeatedly. And so I'm gonna say again, if it's, if it was a definite deal, it'd be fine. Uh, but just the chance, just for the possibility, I, I'm not willing to do it. And everybody will have to make an individual choice, but mine is no.
All right, thank you. Excuse me? Yes, Alderman.
Members of the Board, the Alderman from the Eleventh asked a question about acreage, um, and giving all those great goodies to, and people say it's not about Mr. Paul McKee, but you have to have, to get that, uh, special tax from the state, you have to have, no, not the tenth, he actually got a land assemblage tax credit. You have to have 75 acres to get that. 75 acres. So, your answer is someplace about 75 acres. That's one of your answers. Um, I also want to, uh, dispute the characterization of good and bad choices, or what I like and don't like. I like to call it due process and equal protection. I know that's called the Constitution. And I like that because even though the Constitution didn't include me at first, it got around to including me. It didn't do that at first, and we had to have a lot of amendments for me, for all those great forefathers who talked about the rights and give me liberty and give me death, but I don't mean you black people, and I don't mean you women, by the way, and I don't even mean you young people. So, it took a lot of fluid, uh, movements for the Constitution to catch up with, that I have the same rights as everybody else, due process, equal protection. Great things that we talk about, um, under the Constitution, um, that applies to everybody. I think that Mrs. Taylor has, should have the same right of her property as anybody else in this room, or not in this room. And her property is just as valuable to her as anybody else. I use her as the base, 'cause I got to know her, but I'm not just talking about Mrs. Taylor. I'm talking about all of the people who live in the affected area. And by the way, they're not all black, they're all white people. That's the thing I think people don't know about North St. Louis, is that white people live in North St. Louis, okay? And people, sometimes they get lost in the shuffle if we don't talk about them. And so I'm gonna have to remind myself, 'cause there were white people that lived in my ward, and we, I represent them, and I, we have good, uh, communication. So, um, there are white people that were there even before the black people who didn't move. On the particular block I, I own on Mallinckrodt, everybody else on the block is white except for my building. Um, and they stayed there, and I, you know, I've tried real hard to work with them because I appreciate that they didn't let the color issue make them move. They're there. They cared about their communities. Um, I've been going, everybody now has discovered Crown, I've been going to Crown for 30 some odd years, Cornerstone is a new restaurant, I, I try to when I'm down in that area, uh, I go to the restaurants and I do the businesses that are down there, and I've been doing it for a very long time. The hardware store that's down there, I know it, uh, everybody mostly down there that's been there for 20 and 30 years since I've been, uh, dealing. Those people have the same property rights as anybody else, and they have the same right to be treated, that their property is valuable. So, when people reduce it down to a bad and good choice, they dis, they disregard their constitutional rights, and their rights to be treated that way. There is no way if we were going up into the Twenty-Eighth Ward or the Sixteenth Ward and talking about doing this, that we'd be having this conversation. So, we only have this conversation because of planned obsolescence, and planned disinvestment, and planned, uh, ignorance, and fan that, oh my goodness, how did this happen? Those people over there, they're so terrible, we just gotta clean this mess up that we created. And it's on all levels. And so, to just make it that, oh, this is, oh, so it's more important that we keep these jobs? The government is us. Why are we saying that we're not the government? Why are we agreeing that we have to do this? First of all, I will say, I keep hearing that that's what they say, I still am waiting to bring me proof. If that's the rules, give it to me in writing. Still don't have that. So, the people who tell me, this is the requirement, but don't provide me anything in writing, here's, uh, code of federal register, here's UPS, USC, whatever, I don't believe what you're saying. Because I've known how many times you told me this over the years, well, this is what we have to do, and you don't. So, if it's what we have to do, you should have provided, uh, some proof. I heard the Alderman from the Twenty-Eighth talk about that she's had these conversations and she knows, but I'm on HUDs. They failed to provide us anything until the last minute. So, you ought to be able to provide in writing, so I can read it if that's what it says. You still should have been able to provide me, uh, the Alderman from, who I hate to call him that, the Twentieth, uh, said that he asked about options. What we did talk about options in the committee. We talked about how the government would not accept them. Um, and so, again, ask for the option. Oh, yes, we had that, can I send that to you digitally? Don't have it. The, the option says X Y Z. Um, they are so used to being able to tell us what something says that they discount our ability to read, which is very insulting to me as a member of the Board of Aldermen. You don't need to tell me what something says unless I am confused and ask you. If you provide it to me, I will read it, and then I will ask further questions, not just from you, because people tend to interpret things the way they want to. So, sometimes you have to get more than one, uh, opinion about what something says, okay? And that's why they tell you to do that with doctors, sometimes you do that with lawyers. So, when we're pushing an agenda down here, we tend to hear from the administration and people who are running around for the administration, what the administration is purporting that is the truth. That is not necessarily always the truth. So, I do not understand, and I totally reject that you cannot provide me these things in writing. That this is a requirement that, uh, the government is telling us we have to do, but you haven't provided it. What is so secretive about it if this is a requirement from the government? Why don't we have it before us? Why do I have to take your word, or your word, or your word? The, the, the writing is very, very mighty, and we wrote federal laws, and we have, uh, procedures in writing, so why don't we have that? And again, most importantly for me is I reject that there is no value on these people's home, or that it is a bad choice, and that we're telling the people we don't want jobs. I'm telling them, I don't want you telling me, I gotta tell this lady to move out our house. I, I don't want you saying you can't use options and you, I haven't been provided that in writing, there's no rhyme or reason. Since, uh, the Congressman wrote me the letter supporting the eminent domain, I want Congressman Clay to send me copies of why, uh, the federal government is asking, acting that way, and I also want him to work on changing that. Why would we have to deal with the federal government like that? We should not have to deal with them like that. So, that's something I want him and, and our, uh, representatives up in the federal to work on. That's unreasonable. When you do, uh, real estate, you use options all the time, and you can make the options so strong that, they already got this big chunk of land, Pruitt-Igoe. So, if you're doing the options, you could get options so that if you did this project, it would be in place, and you could start working on Pruitt-Igoe, this is not gonna happen yesterday. So, you would still have time to go through the proceeding to get it done. So, who is it that says, oh, well, we have to do this? We have to do this 'cause who is in somebody else's ward who's sponsoring it? And so, it doesn't make any difference to me, 'cause who's gonna make this about, uh, uh, jobs? And not about people's right to due process, and not about people's right to be treated equally across this city. I know that poor people have always, always been the brunt of, this is how we're gonna do it and move you out, but mostly it's been renters. Now we got to a new low to me, 'cause now we're the people who are actually, uh, invested their money and they own it. Renters can move a little easier, you haven't dug in, you still might have lived there for 20 some years, but when you've invested your money and lived someplace and you paid your taxes and you kept your property up and whatever, then, and you're treated just like, well, you're just a collateral damage, and you're just part of a choice. It's just absolutely wrong. You and all the people who live in that area have the same constitutional rights as everybody else for equal protection, you have the same rights for due process, and you are not a choice. You are a constituent, you are a landowner, you are a property tax, I hope all of you are voters, okay? You vote, and if you have it, you organize and you vote, and you let it be known if you're happy or unhappy about decisions. 'Cause at the end of the day, that's what it is. If we're treating it as a choice, that is wrong. It is for me, equal protection. And we're not treating the people who live there the same way as we treat the people who live elsewhere. And that is because we can run property values down, and we can then talk about, uh, that their value is so much less than those jobs we would lose. But it's so interesting to me when I hear people talking about the earnings tax, because I do know that we've had sponsors who took away, certain people didn't have to pay earnings tax on certain things. So, if the earnings tax is so important, we need to get rid of all those exceptions. And I've been here long enough to know who sponsored the bills, uh, on those earning tax, 'cause we got rid of them for big time, people pay them in here, and we kept it on the small peoples. And then to go to what just really irks me besides the eminent domain, so everybody, it's this whole thing about this mandatory being able to demolish. First Amendment, we got the board bill, 263, mandatory demolish. All properties acquired by the L C R A shall be approved for demolition. So, we put, uh, things, language in for protection, and then, on the other hand, we take it out. I heard people say, well, we put in, um, things to protect if I'm not here. Unless you do some very handiwork that's very restrictive, covenants like what we have with the Norm, whatever his last name's golf course, which it would cost you a lot of money to change his name, 'cause all the women sponsored the bill from the Twenty-Eighth that made it so it's very, you'd have to pay a lot of money. Unless you have those kind of, uh, uh, protections in something, you could put things in place, and they'll come right back, the next person, and change it. That's what we're doing. People who put heritage in place, we're going right around heritage. Um, if we do not get this property, we've already given, uh, I heard someone say, it might be very hard to get 15 votes for eminent domain. Not gonna be any harder than what we have right now, how we got it out of committee, and what, how we got it on this floor, the Board of Aldermen, it's the same, 'cause these 15 votes will be for eminent domain. So, it will not be any harder than what it is right now. That is, uh, uh, something to, to lull people into a false sense of security, but it is, they should not be secure, they should not be secure because we said from the beginning we would not use eminent domain. So, how can they rely on anything that we said when we said that? So, now it's not Paul McKee that got eminent domain, it's the city that's doing it. We can acquire most of this land, okay, so we don't get the federal project, but we've acquired some more land. Well, we still are not, at some point, we're gonna look for a developer, not gonna necessarily be, uh, the city, so we may be selling it back again. Um, this is how we do things. We do it in increments, and then we come back and say, okay, my bad, we gotta do it this way and it's an emergency. There is no way that they want, uh, that they won't come back in, in a little bit of time, and it may be, just like we did this, since I've been back here two years, no eminent domain, eminent domain. So, it could be a very short time, or it could be a long time, drip, 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 but it will go that way. And four, I heard somebody talk about, um, Pruitt-Igoe, and so, um, didn't ever go to Pruitt-Igoe, never been there, um, but saw the remnants of Pruitt-Igoe and read all the, uh, as much as I could about it, and it was a and read all the, as much as I could about it and it was a bad decision in the first place. But although it's the federal government, there was some people locally here who also didn't want low-income people in their neighborhoods and so they pushed the agenda of stacking people. So we cannot put it all on the federal government. The Alderman from the 6th has a board bill right now that's coming before us in which, back from the 70s, that will remove the requirement that low-income housing have a double inspection. So there was a group of people that was doing all of that stuff right there. And so Pruitt-Igoe was built, not necessarily as a great idea, but as a way to, 'cause you know, we're the city of restrictive covenants where black people couldn't live. It was a way to keep poor and minorities in certain corners and we've been doing that. So we try to whitewash our history like it didn't happen and that history doesn't affect you from this day forward and this day forward, history, when you can impoverish your people, you can prevent them from getting education, you can prevent them from being landowners, that doesn't stop with that generation. That goes forth for generation after generation after generation. And then we say, oh, why are you talking about that? We're talking about it because it started someplace, not just with the federal government, but with this very local, probably Board of Aldermen pushing some things just like this. You are valued, you have a right to equal protection. This should not be a decision about is it a good for jobs, it's about do you have the same right as everybody else to buy a home in the area and occupy it?
Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I hope my comments don't yield an additional 45 minutes to an hour, but I thought I would stand up and say a little bit because I sit here feeling like someone's on trial for eminent domain and that we're making a decision to actually condemn somebody's house today, which causes a little confusion with me. I wanna say that I wanna compliment the HUDs Committee for introducing the amendment. I thought it was clever, thoughtful and considerate in light of fact that some 5th Ward residents had concerns about eminent domain. In the 12 years that I've been down here at the Board of Aldermen, eminent domain has been in previous bills and there's never been any hysteria about the use of the eminent domain or the application in case it has been applied. And I'm not sure that it's ever really been applied. I can't speak to that. But this amendment was so clever to me that it would have given me, and it certainly gives me great comfort in the exercise of eminent domain. Because if the LCRA, as I read this bill, wants to do eminent domain, they must come back to the HUDs Committee. It must be voted out the committee by a majority vote. Then it must come to the full board to be voted out by 15 votes. What I really like about the amendment and going back to the committee, it gives the committee an opportunity to hear what's going on out in the field and if people are truly being treated fairly. I spoke with Mr. Otis Williams about the process that they were using. I just wanna read it for you. The Cass Jefferson Project. And here's how the process will work. One, property owners will receive a notice of interest to acquire their property sent out via certified mail. The notice will describe the LCRA's interest in purchasing the property and that the offer made for the property will be fair market value based on a qualified real estate appraisal. This notice will also provide them with the name and names of all contact individuals who will be working with them throughout the process to answer any questions that may, they may have about the process and the offer to purchase their property. Two, following the notice of interest to acquire, a notice of appraisal letter will be sent regular mail notifying the property owner of the appraisal, who will be appraising the property. The appraiser's contact information and the property owner is encouraged to accompany the appraiser during the appraisal process. Three, once the appraisal is complete and the fair value is determined, the fair market value is determined, the property owner will receive another notice, the notice of just compensation, which will provide the property owner with the value being offered for the property. In addition, if the property owner's occupied, if the property is occupied, the owner will receive a notice of relocation eligibility notifying them of the relocation benefits available to them. Four, should the property owner agree to sell the property, a closing date will be set. Should the property owner not accept the offer, negotiations will continue until an agreement is reached or it is evident an agreement will not be achieved by good faith negotiations and all attempts to reach an agreement have been exhausted. At that point, a property may be referred for eminent domain, which will go back to the HUDs Committee from what I understand of the board bill and will have to be presented again back to this full board. So unless I missed something in all the debate because I'm sitting here feeling like we're actually going to condemn someone's property right today and that's not what I'm getting out of this, I have never seen a safety net put in place such as this. Again, I feel it was clever, it was thoughtful and it was considerate. I've had the opportunity with an MSD project in the infamous Horseshoe area of my ward several years ago, which is the 56, 5700 blocks of Hebert, Ashland and the 3300 blocks of Blackstone, in which it became a buyout area. MSD had the power of eminent domain. It was amazing to me during that process, how many constituents were calling me and calling eminent domain, saying, buy me out, buy me out, buy me out. What are you taking, why, what's taking so long? Buy me out. The process was such a great process that MSD, their guarantee was to move individuals into a similar house anywhere they wanted to, even if it was in Texas, and pay the relocation expenses. People who were upside down on their mortgages had that negotiated and worked out. There was not one disgruntled person in the process with the accept an investor who had a four-family flat, which was dilapidated and vacant for several years, and of course, he only wanted $100,000. Well, that was totally unacceptable. But every constituent was treated fairly. The MSD was more than equitable. I was intimately involved in the whole process as the Alderman from the 5th said, as she will be. And we're in a position today where, again, some people said we have to make a tough choice. I have faith in the leadership of the Alderman from the 5th Ward. I have faith in Mr. Otis Williams from SLDC. And why do I have so much faith in these individuals? Because I had a chance to get to know the Alderman from the 5th and I know that Mr. Williams, who heads up the St. Louis Berman Corporation, is a retired lieutenant colonel. I have the utmost respect for his character and his leadership and his willingness to always tell it like it is. I would not wanna be part of creating hysteria over this opportunity. We're sitting here with a situation where we have to do something for the greater good of the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 5th, you recognize to close.
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize to close. Just for clarification, because I know there were some questions out there and we'll be more than willing to answer some questions, you know, once we get through this process. But just for clarification, Northside Regeneration currently owns 46 acres. The city owns 29 and we need to acquire 25. In regards to this whole process of eminent domain, this is something that LCRA has done before. It blows my mind that, you know, we've never talked about it to such lengths before, but this is something that they have experience in doing and they have acted in ways to accommodate people, you know, on every level to assure that everyone's needs are being met. And the way it's been echoed around this room, we all know that this is a hard decision to make. I'm not asking anybody to really step outside their views, but think about what's in the best interest of the city. Personally, I know we have members of the board who feel some type of way about displacing anybody. However, we haven't gotten there yet. When the Alderman from the 22nd speaks to some people being upside down in their mortgages, some people who may be living in dwellings as we speak who probably should be condemned. Now, I'm not saying all of them are in that state, but let's be honest about what's going on in my community and my ward that I've lived in all of my life. Simply driving it, you know, because we're talking about it, is not the true experience of living there. And when I say living there and my lineage being a stakeholder since the 40s, so I understand wholeheartedly what it means to wanna stay where you are. But in doing that, I think as a person, you have to look at a situation and say, let me remove just me and what I want out of the process. Let me think about someone other than myself. And when you're thinking about someone other than yourself, then you weigh everything out and you realize that it may be a hard choice to make, but I think it would be a harder decision for us to walk away from here and not do this. So I just ask that you all lend your support to it. Nobody could be battling back and forth with this harder than me because these are the people I have to see every day. And I just ask for your support. I know there are some concerns about Northside Regeneration and Paul McKee and I really don't wanna touch on that, but I'll say that if any one of my colleagues would like to know what we're doing in the 5th Ward, take a ride with me. I currently live in a food desert. We're breaking ground in 60 days on a food mart, you know, so I can stop going on Grand and Gravoy's to go to the grocery store. We're currently building an urgent care center, which is unfortunate in how this situation is. We've had to move where we were gonna put that at for this whole process and this is something that I testified before the Certificate of Needs and we got their favorable consideration to have an urgent care center in North St. Louis. I mean, my son, who has special needs, I have to come all the way south to Cardinal Glennin because these are the dire straits that are going on in my community. So once again, I just ask that you all think about it and just make the right choice because we definitely need to be in a position to receive this. And I know some people made comments about where our politics are on the federal level regarding this and people said things about maybe, okay, Obama's from Illinois and stuff like that. But I mean, on that level, this thing coming to St. Louis has bipartisan support. And so I think it's, you know, when you talk about Pruitt-Igoe and I know that history, it was torn down before I was born, but I wrote a 30-page research paper on Pruitt-Igoe and I understood how people were housed like animals and I understood the tragedy of Pruitt-Igoe. And so although they've changed this thing in such a way, it won't totally encompass Pruitt-Igoe, but it's still a option. I mean, we originally thought that they only needed a certain number of acres and then they come and tell us because this is some national security stuff, they need a 500-foot perimeter. I mean, we're jumping through hoops trying to make sure we do this and I think it's a decision that we need to make and I think that we need to make the right one. And with that, I'd like to renew my motion.
Alderman from 11.
And I respectfully would ask for a roll call on the perfecting motion on board bill 263 as amended.
So noted. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 5th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we perfect board bill number 263, committee substitute as amended, as amended or floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Orkman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Anavitt. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. President Reed. Your vote was. Alderman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Eighteen and seven. Eighteen, I vote seven, no votes.
Your vote is staying the motion, Alderman from the 5th, and perfected board bill 263, committee floor substitute.
Board Bill 189, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and President Reed, an honor recommended by the Civil Service Commission pertaining to applicants seeking employment with the city in positions under the classified service plan, finding that service in the U.S. Armed Forces is meritorious, adding new provisions that may establish a military veteran hiring preference system containing definition, scoring system and documentation
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number 189, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of board bill 189, committee substitute.
Moved by the Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, it gives me great pleasure to move for perfection of board bill 189, committee substitute. Having served over 23 years in the Army and Army Reserve, a veterans' preference for hiring was very important to me and I wanna again thank the citizens of the city of St. Louis for November voting a supermajority to give us the power to enact legislation to create this hiring preference. As we know, veterans give of themselves unselfishly when they serve in the military, whether some serve in harm's way or some don't because they're all in a position to always be ready for battle. The process is very simple. It puts us in line with the post office, the federal government, the state of Missouri, St. Louis County and a host of municipality government agencies across America. Basically, if you're an honorably discharged veteran, you will receive five additional bonus points provided that you successfully pass the civil service examination. If you are a disabled veteran, you will get 10 bonus points. Let me be clear, it does not give a veteran an opportunity to get a passing score if they do not achieve the minimum passing score. Also, it will give one promotional point for people who are already in the system to add to their civil service examination score. And again, I certainly appreciate the citizens of the city of St. Louis for giving us this opportunity. I appreciate the committee for passing it out and I'm certainly asking for unanimous favorability in perfecting this bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion on board bill number 189, committee substitute? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize to close.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to ask some.
Moved by the Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by the Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? All in favor, signature five. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Um, Board Bill number one eighty-nine, committee substitute, is now in bank.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we perfect Board Bill number one eighty-nine, committee substitute, in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills one ninety-one, one ninety-three, two twenty-six, two forty-five, two forty-six, two forty-seven, two fifty-one, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, two fourteen, and two twenty.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for, uh, adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Pre- Alderman Krusen. President Reed. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-three, I vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the eighteenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill two-three-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and establishing a multi-year public works improvement program at Lambert Airport and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill number two thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of Board Bill two thirty-one.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, um, Board Bill two thirty-one is, uh, Airport Commission, uh, request for appro- appropriations of and authorizing public works funds. Uh, I'd like to renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number two thirty-one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. President Reed. Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-one, I vote one, no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the nineteenth and third read and finally pass Board Bill number two thirty-one.
Board Bill number two thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and honors recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of the airport and the comptroller to enter into and execute two automated teller machine, machine concession agreements at Lambert Airport between the city and the following concessionaire, Bank of America and Cardtronics, granting to each concessionaire the right, license, and privilege to operate a non-exclusive ATM concession containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill number two thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of Board Bill two thirty-three.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Um, this, uh, Board Bill two thirty-three is, uh, authorizing to execute two automated teller machine concessions at, uh, Lambert Airport. Uh, and I'd like to, uh, ask for favorable, uh, votes to approve.
All right. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? There's been a request for, is there a requ-
Is there a request?
There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Board Bill, Board Bill two four-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and honors recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance by the city of its airport revenue refunding bond, series two thousand and fifteen, in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to effect the refunding of all or a portion of the city's outstanding airport revenue refunding bonds, series two thousand and five, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill number two forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill two forty-one-
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move for adoption, thank you.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Board Bill two forty-one is a, uh, bill that is authorizing the airport to, uh, refund, uh, revenue for bonds in the series two thousand and fifteen for a total of twenty million dollars. The refunding allows us to, uh, draw down on some additional funds to help with the airport, um, projects there, and we look forward to, uh, having a favorable approval for Board Bill two forty-one.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Board Bill one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Ogilvy, Krusen, Green, Cohn, Ingracia, Howard, Carter, Tyers, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Hubbard, Conway, Ortman, Valmer, Villa, Honowitz, Murphy, Behringer, Rhodey, Kennedy, Davis, Schmidt, French, Boyd, Vacaro, Williamson, Krusen, and President Reed, and honors repealing honors six eight six six three, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance relating to a complete streets policy.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the third reading, reading and final passage of Board Bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the twen- from the twentieth, twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth, and, um, there's been an objection to previous roll. Any further discussion?
Just, uh, thank my colleagues for all signing on last week.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass. Board Bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. President Reed. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Al- Alderman Carter. Twenty, I vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the twenty-fourth and third read and finally pass. Board Bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Board Bill two four-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and honors recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the East West Alley in City Block eighteen fourteen, bounded by Shoto, Jefferson, LaSalle, and Ohio.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill number two forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for final passage of Board Bill two forty-nine.
Moved by Alderman from the sixth, I entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been, it's been, been moved, moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we third read and final pass Board Bill number two forty-nine. There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. President Reed. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Sixteen, I vote three, no vote, one present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the sixth and third read and finally pass. Board Bill number two forty-nine.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment, committee.
Board Bills one ninety-one, one ninety-three, two twenty-six, two forty-five, two forty-six, two forty-seven, two forty-nine, two fifty-one, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, two fourteen, two twenty, two thirty-one, two thirty-three, two forty-one, one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore today and as these may become law. A move for adoption, our cursory resolution, I entertain a second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. First reading, resolution.
Resolution two twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia. The Board of Aldermen calls for the joint establishment of a transportation development district to be known as the Downtown St. Louis Transportation Development District.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on first reading, resolution number two twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move for adoption of Board Bill two twenty-four.
Would you like to seek unanimous consent?
Yes, I'd like unanimous consent on Board Bill two twenty-four.
Hearing no objection. Alderman, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Downtown STL Inc.
Uh, she's, she's, she's fine. You're still gonna have to make the motion to pass it, but with resolutions in our rules, it gives you an opportunity to talk about them first, so you can, you can-
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, Downtown STL Inc. has been in discussions with, uh, many of the business owners and residents downtown, um, surrounding issues of, uh, public infrastructure improvements that are needed and ongoing maintenance that the city is no longer able to assist with. Um, they would like to bring, uh, the possibility of a TDD to the voters, and, um, they need to have two transportation authorities in the city, um, approve resolutions in order for that to happen, so I move for adoption and unanimous consent of Board Bill two twenty-four.
Uh, we have unanimous consent already, so you move for adoption of resolution number two twenty-four, and I entertain a second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number two twenty-four. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Missed the latest unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, February the thirteenth, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman, Alderman from the second and the Alderman from the sev- seventeenth be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteen, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until, that the board adjourns until 10:00 a.m. Friday, February 13th.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand and adjourn.